Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to December. It's the December 3rd, 2013, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Sprague.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us. Is there anyone who wishes to add or modify the agenda in any way? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a second. A motion and a second to approve the form of meeting agenda in front of us. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Next, the, there are numerous items on the consent agenda this evening. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Got a motion and a second to adopt a consent agenda. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Next portion of the agenda deals with special recognitions and presentations. We do not have any this evening, which will take us right into the five public hearings that we have before us this evening. The first one being a review of the 2014 operating, proposed operating budget. Mr. Roggeman has this matter. Manager Neal, you want to introduce the topic? And then, when we're done with that presentation, we're going to open that up for public hearing, public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just give a brief preamble to what Mr. Roggeman's going to do, and then we'll let him do it. What we're going to do for you tonight is to provide, not only for the council, but for the public, in a public meeting setting, a public hearing to provide public input for the budget. This isn't the first time that we've had an opportunity for Edina residents to comment on our budget, and Mr. Roggeman will go over a number of those other previous opportunities, most of which were held earlier this summer. What we're seeking from council members tonight is, again, some general guidance on whether this budget, which has gone through a number of sort of marginal changes, as we've reviewed it with council a number of times over this past fall, we're to a point now in the development of the budget and reaching the end of the year where we really need to finalize our numbers. What we're going to show you tonight is a budget that I would, that I'll recommend to you. It has some tax implications that, on the whole, are modest. We think it keeps us in a very tax-competitive position vis-a-vis other cities in the Twin Cities that are like us, and particularly compared to our immediate neighbors. So, I think right now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Roggeman, and he can do the presentation. It's going to be largely the same presentation that you saw two weeks ago. We did incorporate feedback that we heard from council at that time into this presentation, and so with that, Mr. Roggeman.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. As Scott said, I'm going to give a brief presentation on the budget tonight. Kind of an outline of what I'd like to talk about is here, the process and timeline, challenges we faced this year in putting the budget together, our assumptions and priorities about what we're recommending, a little bit about budget book redesign and a preview of what that's going to look like, and then we'll get into the revenue and property tax implications for this budget. So, the process and timeline, as Scott said, we've had a number of meetings this year. Really, the process for staff started in February, gathering data and having our kickoff at the staff level with the executive leadership team. On here, this timeline pretty much shows the council and citizen meetings that we held, starting with the council retreat in May. One of the goals for this process was to gather input from a lot of different stakeholders. And the three major groups that we were looking for were residents, the city council, and staff members. And so, that's what we tried to do with this schedule. Of course, at this point, we're at December 3rd. We're having our final opportunity for public input on the budget, and then on December 17th, in two weeks, council is required by law to adopt the final budget and levy.
For folks that might have been watching at home, was that actually December 16th? I'm looking at our booklet and also the calendar.
Is that a Monday meeting?
It looks like the 16th is the third Tuesday, and the 17th is the Wednesday. Oh, am I wrong?
You're looking at 2014, sir.
That's next year's budget.
Fourteen, all right. Thank you.
Mayor, you're always working ahead.
Good, I like that plan.
All right.
We have a two-year budget process here in Edina, where in the even years, we spend more time focusing on the CIP. 2013 is an odd-numbered year, so we spent most of this year, as I just said, working on our operating budget. That's the box on the left here. And one of the big highlights of the year for us is our citizen engagement process. This year, for our citizen engagement process, we partnered with the Citizens League for three workshops that we called Financing the Future. We had different themes at these three workshops in June, but we asked all the same questions of the residents that attended. We had about 30 participants in those three sessions. The most popular session was the wine tasting at Braemar on June 13th. The Citizens League produced a nice report that summarized the findings of those sessions and delivered that to council in July. We also met with council earlier this year in May to talk about what our work-plan themes would be for the next two years. And then, after that retreat, we've developed them, and the six work-plan themes that are shown here on the slide are what they are as of today. They're infrastructure, commercial and mixed-use redevelopment, workforce, community vision, communications and engagement, and aviation noise. We've tried to incorporate these work-plan themes into our budget as well. As I said, we encountered a number of challenges in developing the budget this year, as we do every year, we try to develop a budget. Some of those are internal. We had, part of our normal process is we ask our department heads for requests of any changes that they would like to include in the budget, any new services or expansions of services that are going to cost money or bring in money. To request those formally, if they're going to impact the budget more than $5,000, we received 70 total requests this year from staff. Those expenditure requests totaled about $1.4 million. We also identified a number of revenue opportunities for about $700,000, meaning the net effect of all those would be about $700,000 if they were to all be included, which they were not in our final recommendation. Also, eight new full-time positions were requested. Several requests included adjustments to part-time staffing levels. And we've got a number of things, new services and service enhancements that have happened over the last two years since we last did a full-bone budget process, that just needed to be added in. We've also got a number of external challenges to our budget process this year. One big thing that's affecting us, it has a lot of good implications, is that we're going to be exempt from certain sales taxes beginning January 1st, 2014. When I first heard about this being passed at the legislature earlier this year, I heard it was going to be a full sales tax exemption for the city. And what we later learned is that isn't completely true. Some of our enterprises and activities that we take that are more business-like are going to continue to have sales tax attached to them. But we think there will be some savings in the neighborhood of $125,000 annually to our general fund from this new rule. Lots of discussion is focused around health care changes. We know health care rules are taking effect in 2014 that we have to respond to. We've been notified by our insurance carrier that our rates are going up 13.3% in 2014. Also, our para pension rates are increasing for the police and fire employees that we And currently, employer, that's the city, pays 14.4% of a participant in the police and fire fund salary into the pension program. That's going up to 15.3% in 2014 and 16.2% in 2015. The employees also pay a big share of their pension costs for the police and fire fund, and so those are shown just below that, 9.6% currently, increasing to 10.8% over a couple of years. We also know from the state legislature that there's a 3% levy limit for tax capacity levies payable next year. So, when you add together the internal staff requests, the external mandates that we need to maintain our services, if you were to assume a little bit of inflation at 2% to our general fund budget, and if we were to restore our equipment funding program to its prior levels, we'd have an increase in our expenditure budget in the general fund of $2 million. This would be a 7.4% levy increase, and I think all of us know that that's not possible. That's not going to happen, whether we have levy limits or not. So, our response to that, the solution that we find, is that we need to continue to prioritize how we spend these resources, and we have to find new ways to deliver services more So, how do we do that? We've got a number of themes that help us prioritize how we're going to spend this money. We've got few new services added in this budget, which I've already said, I think about this more as a preservation budget than an expansion. We do have four new full-time positions that we're adding, that we're proposing to add to our staff with this budget. Residential redevelopment coordinator and a community TV administrator are full-time positions that are both paid for with a new service charge to the beneficiaries of those services, so the effect on taxpayers will be minimal. We also have added two new full-time dispatch positions due to our agreement with Richfield to provide dispatching services for them. That also comes with new revenue, so the effect on taxpayers will be minimal. We've also got expenditure themes that we've developed to help us prioritize where we should be spending any new money, workforce, technology, and capital. First, the workforce part of those themes. We have added a few new positions that I just discussed. We've got some external health insurance-related changes that we already know about. We're also trying to have a compensation strategy that's based on the market, so we go out and evaluate what the market is paying for the types of employees and skills that we want to hire, and we want to be competitive, so we get the best and the most skilled employees. Same thing with health insurance, actually. We know we've got a 13.3% rate increase from our carrier, but we need to be competitive in the market and in what we offer our employees. And so, we're proposing to add $200,000 to our budget for health insurance. It would cover about half of that increase, with employees picking up the other half. We also established an employee advisory committee this year that changed the way we spend that money, to make it more efficient and encourage better choices and more efficient use of these budget dollars. One thing they did, their plan design encouraged employees to choose more high-deductible plans. It also decreased the number of opt-outs that we would have in our insurance plan, which we think is a good thing. We've also got workers' compensation insurance increases and the police and fire pension increases that I talked about before in our workplace, workforce, excuse me. The second budget theme that we have is technology. We're adding a number of new technology solutions this year to make our workforce more efficient. So, I'm just pointing out a few of those here on this slide. We're trying to develop mobile applications to connect with residents directly. That's our communications and technology services department that's leading that effort. Also, in the finance area, we've added new Insight software that improves our budget process efficiency and quality, and I think we've just scratched the surface on what that software can do for us, too. We'll see a number of new improvements next year related to that. Max Solutions is a software that the Parks and Recreation Department is going to implement that will improve league and facility scheduling processes. Our HR department is adding software through NeoGov that will reduce data entry redundancy and increase efficiency for HR staff, supervisors, and employees. And the building inspections division within our fire department is adding new plan review software that will shorten the time to issue permits. Our third expenditure theme for budget is our infrastructure or capital. We've also proposed that we increase the spending on infrastructure and capital by about $200,000 in 2015, the second year of our two-year budget. This will help address structural imbalances between the funding for our capital improvement plan and the demand for those types of spending. As with anything else, the budget is currently evolving and changing, and at some point, we have to cut it off and produce a document and a plan. And so, there are several things that we would have maybe liked to have been in here that didn't get in here for various reasons. We've started to talk about possible changes to golf course operations. Those conversations are in the early stages. No decisions have been made yet, so of course, there are no changes to our budget that would be reflected in any of that yet. Also, the sports dome. This is a little bit further down the road, this is happening, but we haven't gotten any operating costs or debt costs into this budget yet. We also haven't decided to fully fund the equipment replacement program or the CIP. What is in there? This is how we spend our budget dollars in the city of Edina by department. Couple of things on this graph, our administration department and our public works department are the two biggest pieces of that pie. When we talk about our administration department here, that includes all of our liquor operations as well as our housing and redevelopment authority operations. It's a little bit unique. Not every city either has those operations or would include them as part of administration, so that's why that looks a little bit bigger than it would in some other cities. Also, we spend 6% of our budget on debt service, which we think is a manageable level. Spending by category, these are the same numbers, except instead of looking at them by department, we're looking at them by what types of things are we going to buy with these dollars? And the biggest parts of this pie are personal services, which is just staff wages and benefits. That's for full-time and part-time staff that we hire throughout the year. Big part of our budget is also our capital improvement plan and the related debt service that goes with those types of projects. We've also got a significant cost of goods sold at 11% of our spending budget. These are for things that we go on to sell, hopefully at a profit, mostly at our liquor So, I said I was going to talk a little bit about our budget book redesign. It's really a complete overhaul of our, how we've historically prepared our budget book. The old budget book was typical of the way most cities used to do it. A lot of cities still do prepare budgets this way. It involves a lot of numbers and not much explanation about what those numbers mean. It's hard for somebody to pick it up and understand what's going on in their city if they're reading it for the first time. And it's not very colorful, it's not very engaging. Insight was a big part of allowing us to kind of move on from that and innovate a little bit in our budget process. So, the new book, council has a draft of this document that was included in their packet for this meeting. We're also working to get this same draft online so that our residents can download and view it as a working document. We expect to have a final version of this document available in early January after the final budget is approved. Hard to see on a slide, it's hard to put these kinds of things in a PowerPoint presentation, but this is just a side-by-side. Old book on the left, new book on the right, kind of displaying what I was talking about. Lot of numbers on the left, lot of explanation on the right with some charts and pictures that we think will help people understand what's going on. Finally, revenue and property taxes. Again, we've got a $95 million annual budget here in Edina, and we've got a lot of different revenue sources as a way to spread that out amongst various stakeholders in the process. 35% of our revenues come from all of our taxes combined. That includes property taxes, tax increments, franchise taxes, but the biggest piece of that is clearly property taxes. We also collect a lot of liquor sale revenue. That's a little bit unique to Edina. Utility sales is a big part of that pie chart there. That's not necessarily unique to Edina. A lot of cities in Minnesota would look like that. Talking specifically about the property tax levies, this is what we're proposing for 2014 and 2015. There are the columns on the right. We've got all of our levies listed by purpose. I would just direct you to look to near the lower right-hand part of this graph. We're looking at about a 2.7% increase, depending on how you calculate it, it changes a little bit, but we're proposing a 2.7% rounded increase for 2014 and a little bit higher in 2015. What does that mean for property owners in the city? Of course, the way the Minnesota tax system works, it means that every property owner is going to be affected differently, based on their values of their property. And we know that just because we raise our city taxes 2.7%, that doesn't mean that's necessarily what property owners will see. So, this is one example of a single-family residential household. Our median market value increase between 2013 and 2014 tax valuations would be close to 1%. We're calling it 0.9% there. The city portion of taxes on this property would go from $1,102 annually to $1,136 annually. That's an increase of $34 or 3.1%. Here's an example of one commercial property, same kind of deal. The median increase here is 3.1%, though that's a little bit higher than the residential side. Average value is around $1,500,000 and the taxes on this property would increase $194 or about 3.4%. This includes a greater number of properties. We're not just looking at examples here, we're looking at trends. And this, the other difference on this slide to the previous slide is that this slide includes all taxing jurisdictions, not just the city. But this is information from Hennepin County. They tell us 34% of residential, single-family properties in Edina will see a decrease or no change in their total tax bill. This is based on all the preliminary levies that were submitted to the county in September. Ours was this 2.7%. We know that all these proposed preliminary levies can go down before the final, none of them can increase. On the commercial side, about 19% of commercial properties in Edina will see a decrease in their total tax bill. 37% will have an increase between roughly 0 and 5%. How do we compare to other cities? This is a popular question, and it can be hard to do, because different cities offer different services in terms of quantity, quality, and what their residents expect them to deliver. But it's still a worthy exercise. The other, the other thing that makes these comparisons really difficult is that it's hard to find people who agree on the best way to do this comparison. There are a lot of different ways to compare cities and their tax rates. So, what we're going to try to do is we're going to look at a few different ways and evaluate them in total. Here's one way. This is the tax per capita approach. And what we did here is we took the 2013 levies that were already passed for this year, and we divided them by the 2011 population in each city, which was the most recent data we could get our hands on, and came up with a per capita tax levy. And we compared ourselves to 10 of our geographical neighbors, roughly, in Hennepin County. We came out to $550 per person in Edina, or in about the middle of this list. When we get to the second way, we want to look at tax comparisons, we looked at total revenue. This is the way the state auditor looks at these types of comparisons. And what this comparison tries to do is it recognizes that there are differences in cities between what they might charge in property taxes versus what they might charge in assessments versus what they might get through intergovernmental revenue or aid from the state or federal sources. So, what this does is it combines all those governmental sources of revenue together and divides them per capita. And on this basis, the same 10 neighbor cities, Edina ranks a little bit lower on the revenue scale or near the top. How do we compare to other cities? These are MLC cities, is what we call them. It's the metro, metropolitan legislative commission.
Municipal Legislative Commission.
I'll get it out. Thank you, Mayor. These are cities in the metro area that kind of closely resemble some of the, some of the aspects of Edina. They're good comparisons for us. A lot of them are viewed as low-tax communities. And if you were looking to buy a $400,000 house in any of these communities, this is what your city part of the tax bill would look like in those different communities. And out of the 15 comparisons here, city of Edina is the lowest tax for that $400,000 single-family house. Another way of looking at it is what is the increase from 2013 to 2014 going to be? So, again, I've pulled these MLC cities, is what we call them, and we're proposing an increase of about 2.7%. That puts us near the middle again, but lower than the average increase on our peer cities of 3%. And one final comparison, again, this is the $400,000 homebuyer approach, but just kind of a different group of cities. This is our geographic border cities. Again, $1,113 to the city on a $400,000 house is the lowest of our geographic neighbors, and in some cases, it's considerably lower. So, that's the extent of my presentation, council. I'll be available for any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Roggeman at this point in time? Any other comment? Manager Neal?
I don't. We're happy to answer any council questions.
Stand by, Mr. Wallen. I'm going to open this matter up for a public hearing, just with a quick comment that, over the years I've been involved in the city council work, we, for many years, we just had this single hearing for public input, you know, a few weeks before we adopted our final budget. Over the past few years, this council and this city manager has made a concerted effort to try to engage the public in different ways, because we had such relatively poor turnout for this, this public hearing. And so, we've tried different strategies the last few years. I don't know if you've settled in on any particular strategy. The Citizens League has been very helpful with these meetings. I think last year, we had three or four, and this year, we had three. And so, we've been trying to get more public input during the process. And of course, we've had quite a few meetings as a council in work sessions on this particular budget. So, having said that, are there, I'm going to open this up for a public hearing, as I said before, and if there's anyone that wishes to come forward and, and comment regarding this proposed budget, feel free to do so. You'll have three minutes. You'll get a green light, and when you've got 30 seconds left, you'll get a yellow light, and then we'd ask that you wrap up right when the red light comes on. Don't forget to give us your name and address if you do decide to come up. And we'll gather questions, if people have questions, and then we'll answer them after we close the public hearing with the aid of our finance folks. So, is there anyone that wishes to come forward and comment or inquire, inquire regarding the proposed budget? If you, yeah, I think the side ones would be the best, unless you have an overhead that you, or something you want to project on.
Not really. My name is Frank Lorenz, 7101 York Avenue South. I've lived in Edina for 30 years with a couple of minor exceptions. I'd just like to make a comment on the budget as it relates to your personnel. Over those three decades, I've had a number of contacts each year with city employees, normally at the department head level, but additionally, several levels on down. And I have always received courteous, rapid, accurate responses to my questions, and I generally ask hard questions, so I'm not easily impressed, but I am impressed. So, the policies that you've had in place, which predate many of the people that are in front of me here, so don't take too much credit personally, but what you have been doing to date, or what the city has been doing to date, is working. And I say that as a snapshot of right now. I guess I sense a danger in two areas. Like most other governmental institutions, I get the sense that your staff is somewhat enraptured by the latest and the greatest in data processing technology, and they may be being led down a primrose path. I don't know the details, so I can't say that. But in Hennepin County, they have so much IT that if a errant nuclear bomb from North Korea or Iran were to land on Hennepin County, everything would be destroyed, but the secure links between the downtown county building and their North Point Clinic, that would survive. And whether they're getting value for money remains to be a question. But I guess my other question is that if everybody, if every community, city, county, whatever, aspires to be first in terms of compensating their staff employees, it's something like Barry Goldwater's comment back in the '60s. something like Barry Goldwater's comment back in the 60s. If no child is going to be allowed to fall below the average in test scores, there is no average. And he was right then, but he never became president. So I have no idea what your competitive situation is vis-à-vis employees. Clearly, unlike most governments around this area, your people that are in their positions now have the mental horsepower and the technical skills to handle a city of this size. So hopefully, you'll be able to maintain that without breaking the bank. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenz. I think the last time I saw you was at the state legislature, where I know you are a frequent testifier, so it's nice to see you. Anyone else?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and second to close the public hearing related to the proposed budget discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried.
Can I ask Manager Neal a question related to something that Mr. Lorenz brought up?
I think you and I were headed in the same direction. It was an interesting question. I think it's, it's worth an answer.
Because it was actually a question that came up at a breakfast this week, is to where's our staff as opposed to our neighboring communities? And I know what you said, but I'm going to let you say it again.
Talking about levels of compensation.
I appreciate the question. And I can tell you that from a, from a pay strategy standpoint, one of the, one of the big tasks that was completed in the last, over the last year, has been the development and implementation of a new pay plan. In, in the public sector, that's, it's really a, a complex task to do because you're, you're grading, not only are you looking at what your competitive cities or competitive employers are doing, but you're also look, so you're looking at external equity. But we have to, because of state statute, have to take a really deep and scientific look at internal equity among, among our employees. We do not view ourselves, nor do we position ourselves as a pay leader. There are communities around us that, that we compete with on a, on a pay basis, but we generally are not in the top one or two positions. Sometimes we're in the three or four or five range, but that's not what we aspire to be. We're comfortable with the pay strategy we have of being in that kind of lower first quartile, upper second quartile staff. We can, we believe we can attract the staff we need. The area where we fall, where we are less competitive is in the area of fringe benefits. And that's something we've been taking a greater look at in, in this budget and talking a lot with our staff about this, this, this past year.
Good. Thank you. Any other?
Just a comment on that. In the new budget format, on page 28, it shows a history of the full-time employees. And I've talked with constituents about this before. We didn't have this publicly printed form. I had gotten it from Director Wallen, just to lend itself for these conversations. But you can see between '06 and 2015, full-time hours, or full-time employees has ranged in the 270 to 280 range with some consistency. And I know in the last, the few years of the recession, we, we furloughed quite a few employees and did not fill positions. And now coming out of that recession, there are needs that, that have to be met. Hence, recent hiring of facilities manager to better manage our assets that we own as a city, transportation planner to help us achieve our comprehensive plan goals, economic development director to help us guide redevelopment, and, and the other positions that are listed. So I think it's been, they've been strategic adds, and there's been a lot of restraint over the years. I think that's part of that, that tradition of fiscal restraint that the testifier alluded to.
And one of our strategies with regards to new employees and new employment has been to be more deliberate about matching the employee and the services that he or she is providing to a revenue source. And so when the several that you mentioned, Councilmember Sprague, our, our new transportation planner is funded out of our utility franchise fees, and that was a policy decision that we talked about at this level. We have a new water resources coordinator that's funded out of our storm sewer fees. The community television administrator is funded out of our Comcast, and not only just our Comcast franchise fees, but the Comcast franchise fees of the other four, the other five cities that are part of our...
Richfield, Bloomington, Eden Prairie.
Minnetonka, Hopkins. Economic Development, Bill Nuenendorf is funded out of our HRA, which is, which is our main economic development agency. So to the extent that we have been able to match a revenue source with an employee or with a service, that's something we think is important. And we've been able to do that, because we've been able to do that, we have been able to not stress our general fund spending as much, which, which is really the most sensitive fund we have to property taxes.
Here's that chart. You can go in a little more. I don't think we need the bottom piece. It's more of, yeah, you can see the total number of hours on the bottom. It's from 2006 at 270 to 285 for 2015. That's number of full-time staff.
The only clarification I would make is that we didn't furlough anybody. We gave voluntary time off, voluntary leave. So people took shorter days on their own, that they were in, and shortened their pay in that. But no individual was furloughed. If somebody retired, they may not have been replaced, but no one was let go for the purpose of balancing a budget.
Thank you, Member Brindle. Manager Neal?
Mr. Mayor, I think a couple other things that I would want the council to know about this budget. One of the things that we have been taking a really tight look at at the staff level has been looking at our funding, looking at our spending growth and our funding growth, and, and trying to, trying to match it up the best we can against CPI. And over the last three years, I can tell you that, that we've been able to keep the growth of our total tax levy below the growth of the CPI in 2011, 12, and 13. And it, and it will be a goal to do that again in 14. One of the things that we are benefiting from in, in this budget and next year's budget as well, if you'll recall, in 2011, the city, the council and staff went through a process to decide how we should capitalize on a $2.5 million fund balance, some that was generated from the annual fund balance and some that was generated from the closing of the communications fund. We spent a million dollars of that on, on infrastructure and tech spending. But the other 1.5 million, if you'll recall, we spent on buying down some existing debt that we had, some, some short-term debt, some medium-term debt, and some long-term debt. And the advantage that that provided us is that that 1.5 million was able to pay off or pay down about $2 million worth of bonded debt. And that enabled us, that enabled us to decrease our, our debt service levy, and we're having the benefit of, of that right now. One of, a couple other things that I'll, I'll tell you about as well, because I think Edinburgh Park has been a success, and we've talked about that a couple of times here. In, back in 2011, the Edinburgh Park facility was, had a cost recovery, a cost recovery of about 70%, so about four, it was not, it was, it was losing, if you want to look at losing money, it was not covering about $468,000 of its cost. We went through a public process with our park board and citizens and council and staff, and today, we have that cost recovery model up to 95% and are pretty close to breaking even at the park this year. We decreased the, the management staff at our arena, I think somebody mentioned that earlier, and we have the, a record revenue year at the arena this year. So there have been some, some changes in how we've managed a couple of things here, and they've produced some, some good results for us.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Following up on the comments about the improvements at Edinburgh, those, that improvement in the financial picture was made with continued availability to the community. We heard from the community about the importance of the warm water classes that were offered there. Those are still offered. And we also were able to, that was able to become a resource for a swim team that purchased a certain set number of hours every winter. So I think that's, it's a really good story because it's not only a better financial picture, but also preservation of a community resource.
It, it did. And Councilmember Brindle reminded me, not everything we did there was an improvement. We took down some trees, which were dear to the community, but they were costly to maintain, both from a human standpoint and an energy standpoint. As Councilmember Bennett noted, we made a long-term agreement, sales agreement with the swim team to use the aquatic center, so we began to get a revenue stream from that. And we made some strategic improvements to, to reduce operating costs by taking out some of the grotto area and flattening that and making some changes to our, our concession stand and also the front office desk. So there've been some notable improvements there, not just all cost, not all cost reductions, some investments, but they have, they've done the trick. And we think we can do that in other places as well.
Member Swenson?
I know one of the other themes that we've talked about as a council and with Manager Neal and has been, what do we do in shared expenses with other public, like our school district? And we do all of our health work through Bloomington, so we don't run a health department separately. Bloomington does that, and we pay them to do that. But in essence, it creates a much more effective way of delivering health services for our community. This new Richfield 911, we also did...
Golden Valley.
Golden Valleys for a few years. That's a really efficient way to keep the right number of people here working on our own 911 and deliver it for another community. I'm pretty proud that we do that.
I think one of the best examples is the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility. For, for an annual contribution of about 45, between $45,000 and $50,000 a year, the city's able to leverage that 10 times to get a half a million dollars of benefit back from a facility that keeps our police and our firefighters training, both in town and in a facility that's really a top-notch facility.
And the new thing that's kind of come out from a board that Manager Neal and I sit on of Comcast is the fact that we are doing all the playback now for all the, the two service channels that sit, and that would include the school district's playback, too. So there's, there are new things that are happening that are shared. There are old things that we continue to share, and we keep looking for other opportunities. So that's an important story to how we look at our budget as to being efficient as a city.
Thank you. And for Mr. Lorenz, I would say, and others as well, I think this council realizes that we're stewards in this town for a relatively short period of time while we're serving as local elected officials. And we feel the responsibility, just like those that went before us, of continuing tradition, the tradition that makes Edina a special place to live. So this notion of maintaining quality of life but delivering high-quality services at a, at a relatively low rate, we're very conscientious about that and work hard at what we do to make sure that the, the cost of those services isn't, isn't out of proportion to what, what we've historically seen in this community. So thanks for that reminder. I don't think any of us have gotten cocky over the work we've done here. We realize that everybody else has done good work way before we got here, so. But we are, I think, particularly proud to perpetuate that double AAA bond rating that we have, that, that we have, that only about three other, three dozen other cities our size in the country have, and that's a pretty special thing. So that's one thing I think our council should feel good about, is, is as often as we get checked on that, maybe every couple of years, that, that rating continues, and that we feel good about, so.
So this was the hearing. The progress for this is that sometimes we vote on it tonight. More often than not, we vote on it at our next meeting, which is on the...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
This'll be back. Hang on to your books. We'll be back to vote on the budget on the 17th.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have an action on the agenda for the 17th.
No, I know. But that is not a night for a public hearing, but we take comment from anyone by phone, email, or letter at any time. So the public comment part of that, of this budget hasn't ended. It will continue, and the vote will be at the meeting on the 17th.
Thank you. All right. The next matter before us is a request by Spilon Montage to subdivide some, or divide some property, not subdivide, but divide some property that they own at 3909 West 49 and a Half Street. Director Teague?
Relatively straightforward subdivision proposal. At the intersection of France and 49th and a Half Street, as you mentioned, it's the Spilon Montage site. You may be familiar or recall back in May, the council divided off the house that sits on the corner right here. That's this property located right here. So as the site exists today, there's actually two uses within that building. Fashion Avenue, which faces France Avenue, and then the Spilon Montage salon itself. So the applicant is proposing to divide the existing parcel in this location right here to split off the Fashion Avenue from the Spilon Montage. So in a sense, what was one, one large lot, as recently as last spring, they're now proposing three lots. There's no, no changes proposed to the, the building itself. It's just a simple subdivision. The Planning Commission reviewed this at their last meeting. They are recommending approval. The one condition that was added is that the wall that separates these two uses needs to be fire-rated to meet all building codes to protect one side from the other. And Spilon has been working with our building department on, on creating that. So the resolution wouldn't get filed until that's resolved. So with that, staff and the Planning Commission is recommending approval of this subdivision.
All right. Questions for Director Teague? Member Swenson?
When we subdivided off the old house on the corner, that had a variance for the, is it the, on the north side, 49th and a Half, for them to come out into the sidewalk for an entrance was added, and we, that's been removed. Should it be taken down? Is there anything similar to that on this new parcel B?
There's not anything that, that we're aware of, that, there's not anything in regard to that.
So if they choose to sell it and it comes down, let's put it that way, that it, whatever goes into that, if it's a new building, will have to meet our current code?
Current codes, they would, yes.
And if someone buys it and rehab's just the building for whatever they want to do, then it's just a permitted, whatever's permitted there now, retail, restaurant?
Correct. Yep.
Other questions for Director Teague? Thank you. I'm going to open this matter up for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter? Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Got a motion and second to close the public hearing regarding this matter discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution?
I'll move, Your Honor, noting that the, at the request of the Planning Commission, there was a, an additional condition, actually, it was at the request of Director Teague at the Planning Commission, that there be a, all building code requirements required by the building official shall be met, and the discussion was specifically about a firewall between Parcels A and B.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter is also for Director Teague. It's a proposed lot subdivision, preliminary plat and variance request, 5612 Tracy Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a member of the council. This is a project that... The council referred back to the Planning Commission a couple of months ago, just to quickly give you an overview here. Property is located at the intersection of Hawks Terrace and Tracy. There's an existing single-family home on the property. And as you recall, the original request was to subdivide the property into two lots, and there were a number of variances requested that we'll highlight in, in a moment. The proposal was to utilize a shared driveway off of Tracy, this location here, in order to preserve the slope and tree area along Hawks... to preserve the slope and tree area along Hawks Terrace. The Planning Commission reviewed this and had recommended approval, and the council had some concerns over the size of the variance that's requested, concerns over the shared driveway, and the feeling that one single-family lot may be the most appropriate on the corner there. But the council referred this back to the Planning Commission to ask them to consider eliminating the shared driveway in this location, as there are no shared driveways within this area, so the thinking was that that's not consistent with this neighborhood. So, the applicant did revise the plans, there's no changes to the proposed plat itself, so the variances of the plat, all of that stays the same. The only change is that site plan. So, what they're proposing is to utilize that existing drive for the Eastern Most House, and then cut in a new driveway off of Hawks Terrace in this location here, trying to preserve some of the mature trees in that slope area on the corner. So, the request before the council is the same as it was previously, there are lot width variances, lot depth variances, one hundred and fifty-seven feet to one hundred and twenty-two feet, and lot area variances, seventeen thousand square feet is the minimum lot size here. And the proposed lots are just over ninety-eight hundred square feet. So, as the council's aware, any lot over nine thousand square feet, the median within the neighborhood, and the neighborhood is defined as five hundred feet expanded out from the subject property. So, this is a look at that five-hundred-foot radius, and this is what establishes the The applicant has provided this graphic here that indicates, the median is really dictated by lots on the east side of Tracy, lots along Hawks Lake, and the lots most adjacent to the subject property fall below that median average. So, the primary issue for consideration are the findings for a variance met, and so the Planning Commission did consider this, and while they did find that the first couple criteria that we look at are satisfied, they had trouble with the, meet this project or the, with the revised driveway meeting the essential character of the neighborhood. So, the practical difficulty is the size of the lot is oversized compared to the immediate neighborhood. The lots that are proposed are generally consistent with lots on the west side of Tracy and along Hawks Terrace. Lot widths are generally consistent, again, eighty-foot wide proposed here, there are some within that general lot width on this side, and same with the depths would be consistent with the properties to the west. The concern that the Planning Commission has was, in cutting a driveway out into this slope, that that does impact the essential, the character of the neighborhood and the feel. The applicant was cognizant of that, and trying to maintain the slope and tree area here, they've provided this rendering to show what the proposed subdivision might look like. So, this would be the new driveway cut in on the far west side of the property, another rendering that would show that. Again, preserving the black walnut trees and that slope closest to the intersection. But the Planning Commission is recommending denial based on the fact that they don't believe the variance criteria is met, with specific concern over the character of the neighborhood. So, before you, you have two resolutions before you, one for approval and one for denial. The denying resolution is consistent with the findings that the Planning Commission made, and the approving resolution is consistent with staff's original recommendation. Part of the reason we bring two before you tonight is, you recall when this was referred back to the Planning Commission, the applicant extended the hundred-and-twenty-day, sixty-day review time period to December seventeenth. So, while you don't have to take final action this evening, we are getting to the end of the clock here. So, with that, again, the Planning Commission is recommending denial of the subdivision with those changes. I can stand for questions.
Questions for Director Teague? Member Bennett.
Yes, thank you. Director Teague, there is a larger type, easier-on-the-eyes chart marked Exhibit A in the packet. Is that accurate to your knowledge in terms of representation of the lot medians, or I mean the lot, the lot sizes, square footage, lot area?
Exhibit...
It is attached to a letter from Resident Bruce McLellan.
Is it this one?
Yes.
It looks like this, Carrie.
It's about six pages from the back, very near the back of the packet.
Okay.
And it's just easier to read than the small type on some of the charts. This appears to indicate a median, well, first of all, it includes the property in determining the median, and I know that for Five Merrill Lane, we're not including the property to the median to determine the median, so I didn't note that since I had your answer clearly that we normally, I guess, don't include that property. It would just change the roster by one, but this indicates a median at seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-two square feet. It does appear to be slightly different, again, it would change the order by one, seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-one. And the proposed area of the two lots, if subdivision were granted, would be nine thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it appears that it would move that into line. There are sixty-three properties on this list, including the subject property. If that one were to be removed from the list, we're looking at sixty-two, and that nine thousand eight hundred and twenty would move it just above one, two, three from the smallest lots out of the sixty-two. Is that correct?
I believe that to be true, yes.
Okay. And then I heard the discussion at the Planning Commission regarding the compare and contrast with the Kaiser lot across on the other side of Tracy, and it appears that after subdivision, those lots remained at eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty-eight square feet each?
That sounds right. Those are significantly larger over there.
Okay. And I note, this is actually in the materials, that those lots were then, the resulting lots after subdivision, were sixty-four percent greater than the area median. And so, no variance required as to lot area, no require, variance required as to lot depth, that for those two subdivided lots were fifty-eight percent greater than the area median, the neighborhood median. And finally, so the single variance requested for Kaiser appears to have been for width, which with the variance granted, still remained at ninety-four percent of the median in the area. And comparing that with this, it looks like this proposed area is just fifty-five point six percent of the area median.
Yeah, the variances are significantly larger than the ones across.
Okay. So, forty-four point four percent less than the area median, plus variances requested as well for lot depth and lot width, correct?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? All right. I'm going to open this matter up for public hearing, and actually, let me have the applicant come forward first, and why don't you take five to ten minutes to give us your revised presentation here?
Could you just, the city seal is sort of here, please? Can you pick up the microphone?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Rod Helm. I appeared in front of you last time on this. I'm the listing agent on the property representing the Shenites on this sale and this subdivision. Just a matter of procedure tonight, they have a, they've written a statement they'd like to say as well, would that follow me directly, or is that part of the public?
Sure. Why don't we do it that way, they can be part of the applicant presentation.
Okay, thank you. Well, Tom and Gretchen Shenite are here as well, and I'll turn it over to them after I finish. Thank you for seeing us tonight again. I would like to just step through some of the things I brought along with me, but also just talk about some of the process that we've done since we've seen you last. We did do a neighborhood mailing out to the sixty-two properties in the neighborhood back on ten eighteen, invited them to a neighborhood meeting, did an explanation of what processes taken place, offered to meet in person with them, and also hosted it at their property. We only had five households turn out to that. Three were against it, and one of the residences is here tonight. One was for, and one was concerned primarily of safety at the corner. She had spoken back at the original Planning Commission, and we've got some comments on that. I have not received any other contacts for sit-downs since then, those have been the five that we have had. The practical difficulty that we've really been arguing is this median process in this specific area. I know it gets repositioned as somehow we're arguing that the large lot is our practical difficulty. I would argue that it's more how the median process works on this. And there's a couple of things that come out when you look at the median, and one is the distribution of how the sites are set up within the defined neighborhood, but also the sensitivity on where that site lies within the defined neighborhood. So, I've brought the same chart that Carrie just presented. This is off of the paperwork, and I want to just make a quick clarification, because I think one of the members might have been referencing the letter versus the materials the city has had. Back at the original submission in July, the initial surveyor's packet had some corrections that were needed. Those corrections were then completed, that packet was sent in. That's the packet that the city has worked with this whole time, is the corrected version of it, it was re-audited. At the neighborhood meeting, there's, I put together handouts based a little bit of what we've got here, mostly highlighting just to try to show distribution. That original rev, revision that had the other data on it was mistakenly used and photocopied, so there have been some corrections. The city has received all the accurate copies, and we brought that up again at the Planning Commission just because of the neighbors there, we want to make sure they understood. And again, there's some neighbors here tonight that weren't at that. So, just some clarifications, if you look at, I know which letter you're talking about, I got a chance to see it this week, if you look at what was presented to the city versus that, that's where the differences lie. So, I've gone back and asked the surveyor to highlight or circle here which properties lie below median and above median, because part of argument is this distribution of how this works in this particular defined neighborhood. I've taken that same set and highlighted in, just to give a sense of really how disproportionate the east and the west is with regards to the median. And just some statistics around it, west of Tracy, twenty-two out of thirty-two homes were below the median, that's sixty-nine point nine percent. East of Tracy, five out of the twenty-two were, that's twenty-three percent. North of Vernon, two out of the eight, and that's twenty-five percent, were below median. And then actually, the area lying kind of in the primary pocket here, a hundred percent of the properties are below the median on this requirement. Now, the width is also a variance that we're asking for, and just some statistics around that, twenty-one sites within the sixty-two lie within six inches of the proposed sites, and thirty-one of the thirty-two that lie below the median are above seventy-five feet and below the eighty feet point seven inches, so certainly from a width standpoint, a lot of it is lining up. Now, just a quick comment about the sensitivity, and from the very beginning, we've been talking about how this specific area has a really difficult time for this median process to calibrate. I was the agent that represented the Kaiser Edition, too, which on this, your diagram is right here. Now, this is what the original set was for the Kaiser Edition, the five-hundred-foot perimeter, and the median lot for the Kaiser Edition actually dropped down to twelve thousand feet, twelve thousand ninety feet. So, that is, that is a five thousand five hundred and sixty-one foot difference for sites to the south than what the subject is, really causing a, in my eyes, a real practical difficulty just within the same defined neighborhood. You can have two such very different criteria requirements of what is considered a median lot size. Also, too, if you look at the Kaiser set, and again, I know we need to focus on the upper one, but I think it talks to how sensitive this median is within this neighborhood, also the length drops down to one hundred and thirty-six feet from one hundred and fifty-seven feet of our defined neighborhood. And I think a little bit of the irony of this, too, is that in the Kaiser Edition, you know, the sites really make sense on the large site, the eighteen thousand square-foot sites, but again, the median that they have to beat is twelve thousand, and in our case now, where the sites in the rest of the block are around nine to ten thousand, our median is up at eighteen thousand or seventeen thousand, you know, with six hundred and some. So, I think this kind of really speaks to the sensitivity of how this neighborhood is and how the median process, or the median procedure kind of has a difficult time calibrating. I think it probably works very well in like a South Hurry Park, we've got a lot of the same-sized sites, or Parkwood Knowles, a lot of same-sized sites, but with these clumpings of size properties, I mean, as you move around here, and again, a foresight change to the south changes your median down fifty-five hundred feet, also then we start looking very typical next to a twelve thousand square-foot site at our ten thousand. Part of it is talking about how the neighboring sites go, and Carrie had this same graph. This is just the outline of what the rest of the block is. Again, the two sites directly to the west, the proposed sites are larger than those. This is the corrected number, ten thousand six thirty, that was different on the neighborhood handout versus our handout. And again, you know, when you look at typical, all sites are rectangular, all sites front the Hawks Terrace on the block, and again, here we've got a big, large square site that doesn't seem typical. Mr. Mayor, last time I was here, you brought up a corner lot question, and I really didn't have information on it at the time, and it was just about consistency of corners, so I went back in to the same data set and looked at how we aligned to the corners. And in the process, I kind of looked at, you know, the smaller sites being maybe the ten to ten thousand to twelve thousand size, so there's roughly twenty sites, twelve thousand five hundred and lower in the data set. All the other corners are smaller sites like that. All the other corners along Tracy front their east-west road. From a consistency standpoint, the proposed sites will very much match up with the remaining corner sites. So, we kind of went back to everything, trying to create a hybrid solution, working with your concerns on the easement, neighbors' concerns, or perceived neighborhood concerns with the green space in the front, and came about with this driveway scenario, and I just want to kind of step through what our thoughts were on it. With regards to the comments I brought up on safety around the corner, there's going to be roughly a hundred and twenty feet of green space before it hits the first driveway here. Again, out of the hundred and sixty feet, we're going to be maintaining seventy-five percent of it with green space and the hill line. The existing driveway on the east side, right now, the proposal would be to use the existing cut there. This was drawn to scale by an architect to give you a sense of how the driveway on a two-car garage would line up. Certainly, these houses are not designed yet, or not proposed, but we just wanted to give you a scale. I asked him to draw three thousand square-foot above-grade houses, and that's kind of what he was working to do. There was a concern on, that somehow this is going to lend itself towards smaller sites, and some sort of cascade into that. Really, if you look back into that defined neighborhood, there really were only two sites that visually set up to be, I guess, even proposed for subdivision that had the proper frontage, and again, one was Merriam-Kaiser's that kind of fit that block, this one fitting, in our eyes at least, this block. There was questions raised on the watershed runoff, you know, adding another driveway. In case, I know you probably are very familiar with it, but for those that are not, there is a process, once we get through subdivision, before, at the final build plans, that it does go to watershed, so if there was any types of rain gardens that were needing to be designed into it, that would be a point that they would also come back at it. With a comment on the findings, you know, there were three things that the Planning Committee said last time. One was the size of the variances. Our first time through with exactly the same criteria, they approved it seven-zero versus the six-one that they denied at this last time. They talk about reasonable use, that, you know, right now it could be reasonably used as a single-family residence. I think that becomes very subjective, because nine thousand square feet can be reasonably used, twenty thousand can be reasonably used. It gets to be a difficult bar to hit, because I think at any level, you could argue that it can always be reasonably used as a single family. And the last comment, they said that having a driveway onto Hawks is not consistent with the neighborhood. The remaining properties along that side, or actually up and down Hawks Terrace, have their driveways onto Hawks Terrace. So, really, this move does bring consistency into that property while trying to maintain and balance, I guess, what... and balance, I guess, what the concerns are. So I guess, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Helm at this point in time? All right, you want to bring the Schonites up here? I don't think we saw you folks last time.
No, my mother was -- has had a stroke when we were at the hospital.
Okay, sorry to hear that.
And I'm sure that we missed that.
All right. I think it'd be better if you use the side podium, and then give us your name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor and council members, we are Tom and Gretchen Schonite, and we live at 5612 Tracy Avenue. We've lived there for 38 years this month. We are here tonight to talk with you about our request for subdivision and variance. We are not attorneys, not as articulate as those that have spoken against our project at Planning Commission, and not as articulate or as versed in the law as Mr. McClellan is. As you know, he submitted a lengthy, detailed letter with all the reasons you should reject our request, and then made conclusions that we would consider not accurate about our motives, but that's for him to wrestle with. We are all aware that a request for a variance is a request to set aside the exact requirements for a specific end result, and we are asking you to listen to us and do so tonight. We recognize that change can be difficult. There's been little change in our immediate Hawks neighborhood since the Loughlands years ago asked for and were granted a variance to move their garage closer to the street, and then with the adjacent property to our west, asked and was granted a variance to extend their bedrooms closer to our common west property line. That variance required they not have windows on the east side of their bedrooms, and the addition was built to the requirements set forth in that variance. You are familiar with our property. It was one of the original houses in the Hawks neighborhood. We were told when we moved in 38 years ago that the owner built the house himself and eventually sold all the rest of the property off, keeping just the double lot on which his house was built. The rest of his property went to our Hawks neighborhood. It made sense to us at the time. It was clear to us that our neighbors' lots to the west and north were clearly smaller than ours. So why our request for a subdivision? First, we are ready to downsize. Our three children are out on their own. We are spending increasingly more time with my parents as we deal with the aftermath of my parents' or my mother's stroke. They live in a condo in Edina. We want to move closer to them and be more readily available to them. Second, and almost at the same time, we knew from developer inquiries that there was real interest in our property to build what people generally call a McMansion. We were not enamored with that option. We could explain that further, but we wanted to explore alternatives to that. Third, we were familiar with Miriam Kaiser as a long-term neighbor and as a wonderful woman who befriended my -- Tom's mother when his mom came to live with us several years ago. Tom reviewed, renewed his acquaintanceship with Mrs. Kaiser while he was taking frequent short rocks -- walks down the block as he recovered from his back surgery. She advised him of her subdivision process in Realtor Rod Helm. When we were -- well, we checked Mr. Helm's credentials and learned that he has been in the field for 23 years as a Realtor, and that he is the president of the Minnesota State Realtors Association and is the past chair of the Professional Ethics Committee. We talked -- well, we consulted with him about the possibilities for our property, including the McMansion issue, and asked him then to check into the subdivision option. He recommended immediate consultation with the City of Edina Planning Department. We asked him to assist with this due to us being very busy with work and my mother's health concerns. We, via Mr. Helm, have worked cooperatively with Kerry Teague and the other staff, including the city engineer and the forester, ever since then. We found them very, very professional and helpful, similar years ago to our interactions with school board staff and school staff when Tom and I were one of the founding families of Edina Kids Club and the subsequent Edina Kids Club summer program. We have been most impressed, and we thank Kerry. Please note and recall that the Planning Department recommended approval of our request for subdivision and variance, not just once, but at every public meeting we have had this presented at. You have the details of their recommendation. Tom and I believe in dialogue, negotiating, and cooperative problem-solving. So I will say that it took us aback when we encountered the just-say-no opposition that has been presented by six families in our broader neighborhood, as well as the newly-established Countryside Neighborhood Association that I can imagine has had time to have training on neighborhood development and planning. However, while it took us aback, I'm sure that at this stage in your council service, you have certainly heard from all sorts of neighborhoods and neighborhood residents opposed to change. And you are probably more used to this than we are. We are sorry to have subjected our other neighbors and you to a dispute. We believe that the council would much prefer to have cooperative solutions presented to them for their review. It was always our intent to have that. However, the reality is, we have aging property that people are interested in for McMansion. We don't think that's in keeping with our neighborhood. We think it's more out of keeping with our neighborhood than subdividing our property into two lots that are still bigger than our neighbors and building normal-sized houses that are in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. I'm sure that our neighbor will disagree with that. He is on one of the bigger lots, and we had never met him until he came to our neighborhood meeting. In conclusion, as discussed by Mr. Helm, we believe there are sufficient grounds for you to grant both variance in our request for subdivision. We believe that you know and are aware of the tricky nature of the median requirement process in our unique neighborhood, and that we will make ourselves available for questions or comments as you wish. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schonite. All right, I'm going to open this matter up for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And members of the council. My name's Bruce McClellan, and I reside at 5709 Hawks Drive, which is approximately a block from the subject property. And I did submit, as others have alluded to, a written document to answer Member Bennett's question about the source of the numbers on my chart. I came to the city planning office, I think, twice and took those numbers from the official blueprint that was filed way back in July by Mr. Helm's surveyor. Is there a possibility of a typographical error here and there? Certainly, there is, but I don't think it alters the basic analysis about what the median lot size is. Excuse me. You know, I don't want to be terribly adversarial, which, as many of you know, is my trade, but Mr. Helm is asking the city to do something that I don't think the ordinance and the code allows the city to do. He would like to rewrite the code, the early part of 810.02 that defines median and also defines for subdivision purpose what a neighborhood is. And you've heard discussion about the 500-foot radius around the subject property. In his analysis, he leaves out a number of lots that are included in that 500-foot radius. My submission to the city is that the city and this council does not have the discretion to do that. He makes these arguments that, well, you know, it's east side of Tracy, it's not -- it's just not the same neighborhood, it's not characteristic, and on and on. And whether he's right or whether he's wrong, the ordinance requires that all 62 of those lots, or 62, I believe it's 62, be included in arriving at the median. And again, I think the continued comparison with the Kaiser situation is unfounded, and I'm not going to go there. But in a related part of the code that deals with subdivisions, and I'm talking now about 810.11 subdivision two, where this is a section of the code, 810.11, that says guidelines and criteria for evaluating plats and subdivisions. Subdivision two of that section talks about lot dimensions and the minimum lot area width and depth. I deal with lot area in my analysis because where I live, on the south side of Hawks Drive and around on the west side of Hawks Drive, the lots facing the lake are anything but regular. I mean, there are some very strange-shaped lots, so the lot width and depth, I don't think is so meaningful, but I've dealt with the area. And part A under subdivision two, the minimum lot area in a subdivision as defined by Section 850, we don't have to worry about the 9,000-square-foot minimum. The minimum lot area has to be the median lot area for the lots in the neighborhood. The neighborhood is defined in 81002 as all lots that are wholly or partially within the 500-foot circle. I don't see anything in that language that allows discretion to depart from that analysis that in a subdivision, the smallest the lot can be is the median lot size for that neighborhood as defined in the code. And there are policy reasons for that too, and Mr. Helm even alluded to this. If you keep subdividing smaller and smaller and smaller lots, and again, not smaller than 9,000 feet, that's going to drive the median down. It's going to create a neighborhood with smaller and smaller lots that didn't exist before. And the policy, I think, of this portion of the code is to preserve certain integrity or character in the neighborhood by requiring that subdivisions be no smaller than the median lot size. One other part of the code I'd like to draw your attention to is still in, this is in 810.11 subdivision one, Section K. Now, this doesn't deal with median lot size, so I'll depart from that analysis for a minute. But this sub, this Section K is interesting because these are considerations, guidelines, if you, as they're called. But whether the physical characteristics of the property, including without limitation, topography, that's been discussed here in this council back in August. I think Member Bennett talked about the bank and not wanting to ruin the bank, and is that a problem? Topography, vegetation, an issue, green space, has been discussed here. Susceptibility to erosion, siltation, I don't know about that. That's been talked about a little. And it goes on, disturbance of slopes with a grade of 18th percent or more. Now, I don't know what that percentage of grade there, but obviously, that slope's going to be disturbed. And what this subdivision or this Section K reminds me of is Member Sprague's comment in the August 20 hearing, that some lots just aren't amenable to subdivision. This may be one of them, and here, a whole host of reasons that you can't measure, and it's not statutory interpretation, but they certainly lend towards denial of the variance.
Mr. McClellan, we've actually had a snafu with our lighting system. You've had about five minutes, apparently, according to Member Swenson. So I need to ask you to wrap up your comments, if you would, please.
A very short, one more very short reference, Mr. Mayor, to the code. This is Section 810.04, which I think Mr. Teague alluded to without citing the section, and it deals with the hardship, the council shall grant variances only upon a finding that an unusual hardship exists to the land in the subdivision. And then there are six criteria in there to determine what a hardship is. And each one of those, A through F, those six criteria, has to have a favorable finding. And again, that section is not discretionary. And Mr. Teague from the city planning office has said, I believe, when he said the criteria for subdivision have not been met, that he was referring to those sections. So thank you very much. I'm sorry to go on, but...
Yeah, thanks, Mr. McClellan. Anyone else? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
The most.
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Kerry? All right, discussion. Does anybody have any initial thoughts you want to share with council members?
Could I ask for Roger to respond to the discretion that we have or don't have, please?
First, just to clarify something that people find confusing, apparently. There are two types of variances. Subdivision variances under 810 and zoning variances under 850. The zoning variance criteria, as you know, has been recently updated to make it consistent with a new change in state law. And you talk about lot size and that lot depth. That's a zoning issue. So you should not look at the 810 criteria, you should look at the 850 variance criteria.
Okay.
Thank you.
Within those criteria, you have discretion as a quasi-judicial decision-maker on this subject. You should look at the requirements for a variance laid out carefully in the planning report and in your ordinance, and apply the facts as you see them to make that decision whether those criteria are met.
Member Bennett?
Attorney Knutson, you said there were two types of variances, and that one was zoning, and that was lot dimensions. Is there another set of criteria that governs the variance for a subdivision? Or what, when you said two, what did you mean by two sets?
You said subdivision two.
Yes. 810 deals with subdivisions, as the city called it.
Yes, and are you saying that the council has the same discretion under 810 that it does under 850?
There are different criteria. There are different criteria under 810 and under 850.
Mm-hmm.
And the discretion is basically the same. You have to determine whether the criteria are satisfied. In this case, the criteria are under 850, not under 810.
Even though it's a lot subdivision because it concerns lot?
Lot size and lot width and lot depth. Those are zoning issues.
Okay, thank you. I'll talk.
Member Swenson?
I'll go first. I was the one that really didn't like the driveways going across the back. That was the thing that I responded to the last time. But I think I would have to say that the fact that this even is looking at a hybrid solution, it really isn't all like the Kaisers. The Kaiser one needed one. The Kaiser one needed one, one variance on one aspect of it. This needs all three. The corner lot is smaller than every other corner lot on that side of the street. The two lots are narrower than the two lots they face across the street on Hawks. And I just can't support this request personally, so I will be not supporting it, depending on how the motion goes.
Member Sprague?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we alluded to taking a look at the application under different circumstances, and that's what happened here, came forward with a different application. I look at the, the character of the neighborhood, and I look down to two lots, 5705 and 5701 Hawks Drive, which are, that involves a corner lot and how it may have been platted had this lot not stayed large. And those lots are, one is 11,000, where's the chart I had there? One is...
On A-14, there's a, is that the lot area?
Yeah, one's 11,471, that's 5701. 5705 is 10,778, so still larger than the lots in question. So, again, it just, it appears like the lots being subdivided are too small for the area and won't be symmetrical with the other things that are there, to me, that are comparable. The driveway placement, there's one, putting the one on Hawks Terrace, it's true, there are other driveways on Hawks Terrace, 5701 has one just adjacent across the street, closer to Tracy, but the topography is much different. And to me, that's what throws off the argument about it being symmetrical with, with the rest of Hawks Terrace driveway situations, because, again, topography, much different on that corner, and because of those unique conditions, I don't find it meets the criteria.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you. I think one of the dangers with big lots is that you can big, build big houses. That said, when this was decided before, I did vote with the planning commission and listened to the planning commission and the questions they had, the concerns they had, but since have received the letters from the Loughlands and the McClellans, both of whom I know. And that carries a lot of weight with me, they live there, and I respect their opinions. And so, so therefore, I have to, I have to vote against it because out of, certainly out of respect for the people I know and respect, but also in, in listening to, again, the planning commission and following their lead, because I really take seriously the work they do and the, the thought and the research that they provide, so I will vote against it.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. I, too, found the planning commission discussion and questions very helpful, very thoughtful, and they were concerned that their findings be put into the record. I believe it took two motions to come up with a recommendation, and the three that are stated in the staff report are that the size of the variances requested are too significant, the property owner has reasonable use of the property with a single-family home on a conforming lot, and the driveway off Hawks Terrace would be out of character with the neighborhood. And I, having seen the lot in its neighborhood setting and compared and contrasted this, did pull out our staff reports and documentation of discussion from the previous matter on Tracy, and I concur with the planning commission and to, I must vote against it.
If you want me to move our election to 2015, then one-on-seven, mayor, the...
Preliminary plat?
Oh, yeah, we could do it. Why don't we do it that way, and then I'll make a comment during discussion. Go ahead.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, and then on to discussions, since I'm the only one who hasn't commented. Just on a preliminary note basis, I was thinking about comment that Mayor George Latimer made to me one time. He said, "If you're mayor long enough, Hovland, all your friends will be mad at you at least once." So, our job isn't to sit up here and count noses, who we know and who we don't know, who we're worried about and who we're not worried about. Our job is to engage in good public policy decisions here. When I drive down Tracy, I drive down Hawks, I can't tell you how many times I've driven by here since Mr. Helm was in here the first time on behalf of the Shonites who couldn't be here. You can just tell from meeting the Shonites tonight, wonderful people, really proud to have you in our town. But this isn't about personality, whether you're in favor of it or opposed to it, it's about what we think is best for our community. So, when I drive by there, I see a great site for a single home, just like you've had. When I drive down Hawks Terrace, I see problems in punching in a driveway through that hillside. And when I look at the definition of neighborhood and I think about the 500-foot radius and the arguments that Mr. Helm tries to make about this is really a unique situation, we have a unique situation here every two weeks. We had one two weeks ago, I think, with Indian Hills. They didn't want to have Member Brindle's neighborhood included in the computation of lot, a lot, average lot size. We had one a month before that in Rolling Green, you know, so pick your neighborhood, you're going to have an argument about how you define neighborhood, and we've chosen by ordinance to define it as in that, with, using that 500-foot radius, that's what we have to use. Even without that 500-foot radius test, when I go over to that neighborhood, I feel like the Shonites' home and their property fits more with the Hawks Terrace and, and the lake lots than it does with things on Tracy. So, when you look at an aerial or an overhead schematic, it makes it look like those lots over in the lake are a long ways away, but it's really not. All those, that whole neighborhood is very tight and compact. So, I, I don't think that the tests have been met, the variance requests are too great. I don't find any parallels to the other property on Tracy that we agreed to subdivide. And regrettably, Shonites, you're wonderful people, but I just think from the standpoint of whether or not the tests have been met to subdivide this lot, I don't think, I don't think they've been met, and I think you're, if you're going to move and downsize, you're just going to have to sell it to somebody who is going to think about what kind of a house they're going to put on there. And we've got rules and regulations about height and, and lot coverage that hopefully will protect the neighbors appropriately, understand your motivation to have two smaller houses there rather than what you perceive to be, to be one larger house, but I'm, I'm convinced that the vote I took last time was the right one, and I'm going to vote against it this time as well. So, my apologies for that, but that's, that's my analysis. All right, all those in favor of denying the request for, denying the request for the preliminary plat and the variances and the lot subdivision, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carrie? Next matter, public hearing, this is a site plan with variance request for the Think Mutual Bank, which is looking at a project at 3655 Hazelton Road. Director Teague, you have this matter as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, another site that you're familiar with, as you reviewed...
A sketch plan, a couple of weeks back. This is the old Seshwan Star site located on Hazelton Road and the promenade adjacent to the new Byerly's that's being built. So, the applicant is proposing to build a two-story, 8,400-square-foot office, bank building with a drive-through facility. Just quickly go through some of the slides. Plans are generally consistent with the sketch plan that we reviewed. As you recall, there was a lot of discussion about this wall that faces the promenade. This is the elevation that they're proposing with some added windows and, and elements to break that wall up. A look at the project from Hazelton. This will be a clay tile building with pre-finished panels. The applicant has a materials board here that he will show you as part of their presentation. Just to quickly move around the site, you see a series of sidewalks connecting the promenade, the Byerly's project, sidewalk along Hazelton. There would be a rooftop dining area for employees that would, this would face the Byerly's project. You see the promenade located here. Drive-through facility as it would face out toward the promenade. As we looked at as part of the sketch plan, the applicant could develop this site with a code-compliant plat that meets all of our setback requirements and all of our parking standards, but the, the parking fields did fan out adjacent to the promenade and to Hazelton Road. So, based on the recommendation at the sketch plan from the city council and the planning commission, was to shift the building up into the northeast corner of the site and have green space that would face the roadway and the promenade. So, the area highlighted in yellow is the variances that are requested. 50-foot setback is required, they're requesting a 15-foot setback to the promenade and a 40-foot setback to Hazelton Road in this location, so a small portion. A parking stall variance is also requested. 42 stalls are required based on the square footage of the site. The applicant's proposing 30 stalls on the site, they believe that that would suit their needs. They're suggesting a proof-of-parking plan for adding those required parking stalls should they be needed in the future. They're in this location here, here, and then two spaces there highlighted in yellow. This is a added green space. The, a parking stud, parking and traffic study was done by WSB. Chuck Rickert is here from WSB to answer any questions that you might have. You might note that the study did indicate that this site would better function with 32 to 34 parking spaces. So, as part of the recommendation to the planning commission was to add a couple of spaces here highlighted in yellow. Planning commission had some discussion on that, and their recommendation was to leave the 30 states, 30 spaces as proposed, thinking that we do have a proof-of-parking plan and that they could add those easily in the future. So, staff would support that recommendation as well. Again, the traffic study was conducted by WSB, and the conclusion was that the existing roadways can support this proposed project. Just to quickly go through the site plan, there was a lot of discussion about pedestrian connections. Highlighted in yellow are the proposed connections across the site. There was some discussion at the planning commission about this southern connection here. This is directly adjacent to a sidewalk that's going to be built as part of the Byerly's project, so there was some discussion about whether that's needed. It's not included in the, in the recommendation or the conditions, but that might be something that the council wants to consider in eliminating that sidewalk, as it would be right next to a sidewalk that Byerly's is currently building. So, the drive-through stacking itself for the, the drive-through here meets our code requirements for stacking space, plenty there. One of the conditions that the planning commission added was, now, there were concern in regard to the cars as they come through the drive-through and as the lights shine across the promenade across to a residential area to the east. So, they had added a condition that additional landscaping be provided, year-round landscaping to beef this up and screen those car lights. Again, that's reflected in the, the resolution that's before the council this evening. Bike racks are proposed up along the, the front entrance. By code, just two racks are, are required by code, based on the number of parking spaces. Garbage pickup, we talked about at this, at the sketch plan, and as was indicated by the applicant, the garbage collection would be inside the building. Garbage trucks would come in through the, essentially, the, the wrong way to collect the garbage that would be located in this part of the building, and then they would back out and exit in this direction. All the garbage collection would take place after hours, so there wouldn't be that, that conflict. Let's see, in regard to the variance criteria, both staff and the planning commission believe that the variance criteria is met. This is in the PCD III zoning district, where we encourage buildings to be brought up to, to the street. The result is a more efficient use of the property. The proposed setback here, 15 feet, is generally consistent with the Byerly's, the apartment project to the south, will have a setback of 11 and 22 feet. And we're also supportive of the parking variance, as long as the, the proof of parking is established. So, with that, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of this project subject to the findings and conditions in the resolution, and I can stand for questions.
You don't happen to have the previous rendering of the east side of the building, do you?
I do not.
So, can you run through the, the architectural changes that were made on that side? Because that was part of the discussion point, of moving the building up into that corner, but that one of the front doors is on the promenade, and they needed to architecturally address that better.
It looks like Member Bennett has a copy of the, maybe we could do a side-by-side?
Is it? That's the packet. Well, here's the packet. I have it, I don't know if I flipped to the right spot.
You're referring to the side that faces the promenade?
Promenade.
I can run back and get that, we can address that.
Yep.
Sure, while you do that, do we also have materials here?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Do you want to hold any other questions for Director Teague?
Yeah.
While he runs and gets that, and we'll bring the applicant up to...
I'm sure the applicant can go through the detail changes there as well.
All right. I think you're going to need a handheld microphone. You got one there?
Mayor Hovland, members of the city council, I'm Jeff Flipson with HTG Architects, 9300 Hennepin Town Road, Eden Prairie, and we agree with everything Director Teague said regarding the, his presentation. I was digging through my files to try to find the east elevation. The simple answer, from a plan view, to go to, right directly to that question, is this east elevation was straight. And we, somebody asked, could we jog it?
Right.
So, we stepped it back.
Right.
We added that, there's a canopy over to cut it down, so we did try to make it a little more interesting. There's a few more windows, I believe, not, no, 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 there's, we, we have windows on that side, so we, we did break up that facade somewhat. The, from the November 4th council meeting, I believe, with all the, during the sketch plan review, I believe we hit and we've accomplished pretty much everybody's requests, almost, except I have to apologize to Councilmember Brindle, because we're not going to do the green roof. I apologize for that.
I noticed that, right away.
Yeah, I'm sure you looked at it right away, I'm sorry. But when it comes to adding, we've added art sculpture, so we're going to work with the city and to have a art sculpture on the property, as Director Teague says, a bike rack. We've added more organic pathways from the promenade. We've been in just recent discussions with Ross Fitner, promenade, to work with him on what they're going to be doing with our connections, and I'm glad Carrie mentioned the south sidewalk, because we will work also with the adjacent property owner, because it is, if, if they're going to have a sidewalk along this south property line, it's silly to have two, so we should be able to, you know, combine them somehow, some way that makes logical sense.
Go ahead. The... Member Bennett has a question for you, Mr. Flipson.
Yes, Mr. Flipson, speaking of requests, and we had some discussion about the setback of the building from the promenade at the previous, at your previous presentation, the sketch plan. What were you depicting at that time for distance from the promenade?
The setback from the property or the promenade?
The setback of the building from the promenade, understanding that code would have required, requires a 50-foot setback, and what were you showing last time?
I believe we're, we're at, gosh, I believe our setback from the property line is 25 feet versus the 50.
The table...
From building to the property line.
Okay, the table in the materials is saying 15.
Okay, 15, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
And what were you showing previously with your sketch?
Oh, it was pretty close there. We didn't change that much.
Okay. Then you can add that to the green roof. Because that was, I'm really concerned about encroachment on public space. And when you talk about a setback of 50 feet being unworkable, I can kind of understand and then somebody might decrease, ask for a decrease to 35 or they might decrease it to 30 or even 25, which would be half. But 15 is less than one-third of 50. So anyway...
Well, again, we had, originally, we had the original plan where we didn't have to have a variance. But the request by planning and council was to move it up into the northeast corner. And to allow for the proper parking width, sidewalk and green space on the west side of the building, we might be able to slide it over a few feet. But to get the proper stacking space at the drive-up and accommodate the other items on the west side, that is about what we could get. And if you had said that at the last meeting, I apologize. It, again, it's a few feet we could adjust that.
Sure. And I had actually tied it. I had some specific questions about what you were depicting because it is a lovely little plaza on the west of the building. But whether there was any room there because the pulling it up toward Hazelton, toward the north, has a public benefit, I think in terms of the streetscape and in terms of the, and benefits the bank as well because of visibility, which is pointed out in your narrative. But the pulling it closer to the promenade really doesn't have a public benefit. And so anyway, I keep my concern. I appreciate the other things that you've done and look forward to hearing what else you have to say.
Understandable. Okay. Well, that really is it because we agree with staff's recommendation with the traffic study. We agree. The, we will add those extra two or four parking stalls, but as Director Teague said, adding two more stalls here, just for the sake, I think it's best to keep the 30. We have all the proof-of-parking. And with this design, we've got a nice green space in the middle here.
I agree with that, too.
So we felt keeping it at 30 versus bumping it up to 32 probably was acceptable. So I guess at this point, if you, the, I guess I can show you the materials on the exterior. Really, there's just three materials. The top one is a metal Luca-Bond and the middle is the clay tile. It's a very nice, I don't know if people want to see it. It's a very nice product in lieu of brick. And then the bottom metal...
Is it bricked, like brick?
Oh, it's a clay tile. Except significantly more money. And it, because it's a beautiful look and it sheds water differently than brick does. And so it's, you touch it and feel it, it's like brick, yes.
Lays in the same way into...
No, there's a different way it's hung and it's basically a water screen, it's called. So, but in essence, very similar. There is no mortar in between.
But it's in brick pieces?
It's in panels, larger than bricks.
Panels?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And so it's really the tile and the two different metals. And the Luca-Bond metal is a better metal from the standpoint. It's not break metal that sometimes you'll see metal on buildings where it starts to oil can and roll in and out. This product will not do that.
I have a question about the clay. I suppose about the metal as well. August 6th, we had a hail event here. And at our house, we had hail that was two and a half, almost three inches in diameter. How is, how are these materials going to handle hail?
Well, the clay tile will handle it very similar to brick. The metal, if it's, it's a much stronger metal than people have on their homes significantly. If, you can kind of see the side profile. It's not just a metal panel. It's, it's got a, it's a thickness to it. I think you would see hail if, you know, it's like little BBs hitting it, but it won't dent it significantly. So it's a very durable product. But I would, I can't tell you, you're not going to see the hail damage. And knowing, think Mutual Bank, like they've been on France Avenue for 18 years, knowing them, if there's problems, they will replace it. They want to have a classy building. So if they do have hail damage, they would replace it and get it corrected. Yes?
It's hard to see from these renderings, but the blue L-shaped piece that you use with the word "think" on it, is the height of that in its final form the same height as the part of the building that has the brick or clay, clay bricks on it?
Very, very close. Let's see. Here, this is an actual photo of their facility in Eagan. And you can see the parapet height where the blue is, is very similar to the height of the clay tile.
What's similar? One foot, two feet?
It's more than, and this one, we're going a little bit higher. This is a prototype design. It's approximately five feet difference. So the blue is about five feet higher than the parapet for the tile.
I know that the blue and the "think" part is part of your image and your design and everything. I struggle with the blue cover color, but it's part of who you are and I understand that. I think I, the idea of it going five feet higher, you know, you have, as you refer to it, that really high-end clay brick. And I like that. It's an interesting building. I like the gray metal that you have in your entryway with all the windows. I find the blue L incredibly dominant. And if it's going five feet over the whole building, it becomes a sign unto itself to me. And I guess I would say I'm struggling with that more than anything else in this project. I don't struggle as much with where you are in relationship to the promenade. I appreciate what you've taken out in parking, you know, to have more green. You made the drive aisle exiting the drive-through narrower. You took the trash bin away from where I didn't like it. You've done a lot of things. You've added landscaping. But, you know, I think it will look kind of like this particular picture right here, though that's the old packet. And to me, that blue corner becomes too dominant for me for the building. And then it's sitting 11 feet away from the promenade and, yeah, or that. And I'm maybe not comfortable with that.
Can you go back to your, the building you're showing in the picture? Yeah. So that right architectural piece with the brick or with the clay tile, what would preclude you from doing something like that on the promenade side in this building? Where you have the full height windows, you still have your metal awning to break up the wall. But...
The, I guess, the blue entrance is actually on the west side of the building, not the east side.
I know where it is.
And so it's, we don't have any blue on the east side or the promenade side.
My question is, back to the, what's to preclude you from doing a larger window set with that contiguous awning, just like shown in that last picture that you had up?
More windows?
Yes. If you look back to the building, you just see the right side, yes, just the clay tile part of that building. Why couldn't you do that type of facade in this building on the promenade side?
Well, in this, in this central area, that's on the main level, it's mechanical. Upper level is the toilet rooms. So this back, what I would call the, this side, the east side of the building in the middle and towards the southern end of the east side, that's the utility side of the building. So there's mechanical room, storage room, and then stairways along the backside.
Is there any ability to relocate those functions?
We've gone back and forth with, because of the entrance now being on that side, it'd be really challenging to do that.
What about on the north end where you have that, those four windows?
Two up, two down. Couldn't you do that, couldn't you create an effect there like Member Sprague is talking about? You know, if we, if we recognize that you have to have your mechanical somewhere, understanding that that center indentation is hiding mechanicals, it still seems to me that to the north, towards the, towards Hazelton Road, you've got the ability to create larger windows there, which may more than make up for the lack of windows in the center area and the downsized windows to the south end of the east side.
Again, I'm not sure how much time I have, but let me show you the floor plan. And I, hearing what you're saying, at least I think I understand. Here is the floor plan of the upper level and promenade side, Hazelton side. There is a community room that is, the room is being planned for the community.
Can you zoom on that a little bit?
There we go. So we have the main, you know, the stairway elevator coming up to the upper level, the community room, toilets, mechanical room, and then the back stairway, storage, and then the employee lounge. This is the plaza outside on the roof. And so the two windows we have there proportionally are pretty good for the room. You know, they're going, in the middle, they'll have a TV monitor similar to what you have here in the council chambers right in the middle. So we might be able to make these windows a little bit larger, maybe not get them quite as large as the three on the north side of this room. I guess, you might get in trouble for this, but I guess in here, we could put false windows in, you know, put two panels of what's called spandrel glass. So they're, on the inside, it looks like a wall; on the outside, it looks like glass.
Yeah, we did something like that on 70th and France in that... Not CVS, I'm talking about the, yeah, the nutrition.
The vitamin store.
Vitamin store, yes. Some false windows up. But, yeah, okay.
The terminology is spandrel. So on the out, if you, as an example, if you see a 10-story building that's all glass, well, you know that you can't see because there's floor structures in the middle. Where the floor structure is, that's where spandrel glass is. So it looks like regular glass. It's just, there's wall or structure behind it. So maybe we could do something in the middle here to add, to break that up a little bit more.
And then in that southern section, you've got those, the two little end cap windows, those couldn't be somehow enlarged as well.
Yeah. Well, they're part of the stairwell. We've added that into the stairway. If you look on the plan again. So that was the rationale for the smaller window along the south end.
You know, another element that could potentially help, I think Member Sprague's onto something interesting here, is how to spruce up that east side is what he's getting at. And that's what we asked you to do last time. So now you've come back and you've created multiple planes, so it's not on a single plane. And you've created that walkway element or that small section of cover that tends to match up with what you've got around the other side of the building. But what's really interesting about the other side of the building is that you've got, I don't know what you call those design elements, those white design elements, but the windows are recessed underneath that...
It's an overhang, yes.
That overhang. And it's that overhang, to me, that creates some of the real architectural interest. And you've tried to create that overhang element on the first level on the east side, but is there anything that you could do, you know, starting on the north side and kind of wrapping the corner and going around or kind of repeat that, that overhang effect?
Yeah.
That could, that could dress up that east side more, along with doing something with the windows on the north side of the east side.
I think, working with our client, we could take, you know, we can have, you know, put two larger windows in the community room and just have the TV ceiling hung in front of the windows. You know, you have to have blinds, obviously, here. But we could have this wall mass, like you see the wall mass between the windows here, we make that smaller at this point. So the two windows on the east side would match the windows on the north side. So that would help.
On both levels?
The main level, it's a little more challenging, but possibly, yeah. We'd have to, we'd have to line them up. So, yeah.
That, to me, really opens up that corner and wraps it well.
Well, we, if, I think we can do that. We'll make it work, how's that? To get those windows to match the windows on the north side in that community room. You know, Mayor Hovland, we looked at even this recess going the blue, inserting the blue, because we really only have two materials, the metal and the blue, or the metal and the tile. And we felt if we put blue in there, it was over, it really was too dominant.
Yeah, don't do that. Member Swenson would have...
Yeah, she's already shaking her head. The, from Councilmember Swenson's comment, we could, your concern about the height of the blue, the image of the, their actual building, that...
It doesn't seem as pronounced in that actual...
It's definitely not. And so we can pull, pull it down. So two feet difference versus five, because that's, that would be a significant drop.
I would be okay with two feet.
Okay.
Three feet less in height.
Three feet less.
Two feet difference between the top of the blue and the top of the clay building.
And then working on enlarging the windows on the north end of the west or the east elevation.
Correct.
So they would match the north windows, I guess.
And spandrels in that utility section.
Yeah. We'll look at that because, you know, design is, everybody's got their opinion on design. And I am a little concerned about how that will look, putting spandrel in that recess. So we'll, we'll work with staff if it's acceptable to the council to address that in that recess.
For me, that would be okay. I mean, if you get the windows enlarged on the north, on the north end of the east side, I think that's going to be quite significant, as Member Sprague said.
Okay.
It'll dramatically change the appearance of that east side.
I have another question.
Sure.
I want to sneak in here before we move on to something else. The gray metal piece on the material board, where is that on the building? Because I see some, I see lots of the orange and I see the blue, but...
The gray is, it's a white, but it's the metal overhangs that you see.
Oh, it's the metal, oh, okay.
It's the overhangs.
Okay.
Mary, this picture shows it the best.
Okay.
It's the really, yes, thank you. It's really the fine horizontal lines.
Okay. Thank you.
The, I know we had this discussion last time about the fact that there'd be a significant variance on the east side along the promenade. But I think the point was for a lot of us, if you engage the promenade the right way, we'd be comfortable with that significant variance. Member Bennett isn't as comfortable, but I'm more comfortable because not only are you 15 feet from the right, from the promenade, but the promenade is an 80-foot wide right of way. And so you're really, from that sculpture pod, you're probably at least 55, 60 feet. So the notion of buildings being up close to the promenade, properly engaging the promenade to embrace it instead of reject it, is a notion that is appealing to me and that I'm comfortable with, so.
Mayor, following up on that point to the landscaping, I know the planning commission talked about more conifers and that tree line in the, I guess it'd be the southeast corner. Am I reflecting, no, yes.
Where the cars are coming through the drive-through.
Yep, right. What about the perennial landscaping that we see along that east side? Is that, does that have any winter or fall interest in it or is that a seasonal bed?
Well, our, I'm not going to be able to tell you what we're calling out. We don't, this isn't the actual landscaping plan. But with planning commission's recommendation, this area will have to be dense all year round. That's the goal. But I think we also have to be careful. We don't make everything too dense because we want it to blend back and forth.
Right.
So diagrammatically, this image represents along the north side of the property line, lower bushes, smaller bushes. So the building, you know, because if we start to make... So, the, the building, you know, because if we start to make the bushes too high along here, then we're encroaching even more on the promenade.
That's what I'm talking about, the bush element and the perennial on that, where your finger just was. Can any of that have seasonal interest where it's not just a, a summer, but there's also a fall element?
Sure.
Do you know, do you know what I mean? So, that at?
You're okay?
Since we're addressing the promenade year-round, we have walkers and bikers year-round, we're trying to create something of interest year-round as well on that, on that landscaping pot.
Yeah, whether it's color or whether it's a fall season, not tall.
Rights.
You, Arbor, Whitey, whatever, a green.
Sure. Yes, definitely. And that, if I.
What else, what else did you want to tell us?
No, that's, no, that's, that's plenty.
Member Bennett, you've got a few questions for either Director Teague or?
Or kind of a response. Um, I think, I think we're probably all using the same terminology, which is that when we refer to promenade, we're referring to the 80-foot wide park, not just the pathway and the park. Um, and so, when we talk about the 15 feet, you're talking about being 15 feet from the line of the park. And, um, and I would rather have, to the mayor, to the mayor's point, I think that is one of the issues, that the closer you get to something, I mean, that setbacks are, to paraphrase Robert Frost, "Make good neighbors." And so, the closer you get to something, the more important that design becomes because it's going to be more in people's faces and in view. And that was, I think, the point raised at the Planning Commission about having enough screenings so that on a winter evening such as we're heading, in the midst of, that the headlights from the cars at the bank, which are going to be shining into the promenade, don't necessarily shine in people's eyes. It's, that's what I heard about the screening, and I think Member Sprague picked up on that. Um, I would rather have better design than more distance. It doesn't look like we're going to get more distance. I understand that I'm in a distinct minority on that. But it is a public resource, and I think it's important to be as respectful of that public resource as possible. Um, I think your design does a good job of that. I like the narrowing of the drive lane. I like the additional, um, green space. I like the Planning Commission's suggested approach of going for less rather than more parking. And if you need the parking, um, I would like to know where those proof of parking agreements get, uh, corralled because I know that this has been an issue in the past where they don't necessarily get brought back. Um, but we have seen them also used successfully elsewhere, and so I have some confidence in that. And also, with the descriptions of this, this tenants or, or owners' corporate presence in the community, I have confidence, um, that it will be respected. Um, so I think that, um, I think you've done a good job. I.
Thank you. And your comment is, is right on the money. Think Mutual Bank will add the parking before you ask them to. Because if they find this parking lot gets full and people are parking in buyer lease, they will add that parking. But if there's any type of document that I think we'll have to sign, if the city triggers it, they'll be happy to do that.
Do you anticipate cross-parking? Do you anticipate sort of the reverse happening, which is that your parking may become stressed because people come in to park, to, to have a clear access to the promenade during a day? And so, they'll perhaps use your parking spaces?
You know what? I wish I knew the answer. I don't know if they'll be parking there to get to the promenade. Truthfully, our original plan where we had all the parking on the promenade side, one of our rationales was is, then that would be easier for people to park there. In this case, with the parking on the other side, now on the west side, they have to cross the drive-in. So, don't know the answer to the question if they're going to use it. We hope on weekends when the bank is closed, people can use it as long as they keep it in good shape. So, I, I really don't know. I would guess, yeah, I don't.
I think it's going to make it clear. I think they, I think to your point, having, uh, reversing and having the drive aisle next and the additional green space will make it clear that the parking relates to the bank building itself.
Any other questions?
Member Brindle, any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Uh, Director Teague, any other comments?
None from staff, no.
Yep, all right. Now, we're going to go, now that we've had the applicant presentation and our director has no more comments, we're going to the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Uh, I'm opening this up for public hearing, public testimony. Does anyone want to come forward, uh, and inquire or testify regarding this matter? You'll have three minutes to do so. No one coming forward? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved.
A motion of second to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose say nay. Carrie, um, do we have a motion regarding this matter with the, with the changes that we discussed at council?
I will move Resolution 2013 dash 118.
I'll second it.
Um, with condition, with certain conditions, Member Brindle?
Yes.
Um, and let, let's, let Member Swenson read those conditions, see if you agree with them.
A three-foot reduction in the height of the blue section so that it does not exceed more than two feet above the rest of the building that is in clay.
Okay.
A change in the east side of the building with size of windows and, um, what are we? Spandrels and, uh.
Well, larger, larger windows on the north end
To match.
Of the east side, upper and lower, to match the north side.
Elevation.
Right. And then the spandrel, I, I'm comfortable if the rest of the council is in letting Director Teague look at, at the design and make sure that it makes sense and that we're not just inserting a line straight across and it looks dumb.
Okay.
It looks enough like glass.
Right, right. Plantings, um, below that, to be of interest for seasons. Um, I think the Planning Commission already added the additional screening for headlights, correct? And I think that was all we had.
You're comfortable with that? Uh, you're comfortable incorporating those conditions into your motion, Member Brindle?
Uh, yeah. Eleven is landscaping along the east property line, adjacent to the drive-through area to be increased. Yeah, so that one's in there. Yes, so that's just fine.
All right. Correct.
Uh, 12, 13, 14, yep.
All right. Is, is the second or comfortable with that?
I second and I am comfortable.
All right. Got a motion of second with, um, to approve Resolution 2013 dash 118 with an additional three conditions added that, uh, Member Swenson has articulated. Member Brindle is comfortable with it. Member Bennett's comfortable with it. Director Teague, have you got the additional conditions? All right.
Oh, and did we, is the resolution talk about using the board of materials that were presented today?
City council meeting, it's included in the.
Okay, thank you. Perfect.
Okay. All right. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose say nay. Carrie, thank you, Mr. Swenson.
Thank you very much.
Uh, for my comment, I just want to, I, I let the Planning Commission know that, that I don't think there's many cities, if any, that do the sketch plan review process like the city of Edina does. Keep doing it. Because it's nice, because we can come in with an architectural plan and not have our civil engineers and landscapers do all the engineering, and then we present, and especially in this case, it's torn apart and we got to change it. So, I really do appreciate this. It takes a little longer, but it's time and money saved by our client by doing the process. So, I just wanted, I forgot to tell you, it was in my notes, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. That was our intention in doing this with the recommendation of the Planning Commission in the first place, so. All right, we've got one more public hearing this evening, and that's, uh, involves some revisions to clarify, uh, Section 850 regarding redevelopment or development in the R1 zoning district. Director Teague, you have this matter. You can take it sitting down, I think.
I do. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, the intent of this ordinance before you is to make the ordinance that you adopted, oh, a month or two ago, regarding residential redevelopment, more clear in the code. So, there's no real substantive, um, changes or specific regulation changes that are, that are proposed. So, I'll just quickly go through to summarize. Oh, and I should point out that, um, Member Bennett had some suggested language on the first page, and that language is highlighted in green. Staff would support all of those, that, those language amendments to make it even more clear.
Is that on the, on the dais?
It, yes.
Mm-hmm. It's right here. Do you want it? I can share it with you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, the, the intent of page one there is to clarify the ordinance that the previous ordinance, we required a, uh, an attached garage could have a five-foot setback. The ordinance was amended to, for an attached garage to have the same setback as the principal building. So, this language here defines accessory building, um, to make that clear, that we are now requiring the same setback for an attached garage as we would the principal building. So, all of that language there on page one, um, is geared toward, um, that requirement. Page two helps clarify the, the two options that are, that are now allowed for the side yard setback on lots between 50 and 75 feet. It's just simply adding in each section the choices. That wasn't quite as clear in the original draft. Uh, so that has been added on page two. Page three, there was an omission regarding setbacks for lots less than 50 feet in width. That was just, um, staff error on, that got deleted somehow. The regulation doesn't change. It's just simply adding it back into the, the code that was adopted. And the last changes are the little, the 30 with the stars. Um, the stars which refer to another section of the code where we get into the front yard setback regulations. That's just making sure that that's consistent all the way through with our front yard setback regulation. Also want to point out that Scott Bouson from Great Neighborhood Homes submitted an email this, uh, this afternoon, and that was handed out before you this evening also. He's suggesting some, um, more substantive changes for consideration. So, that's, uh, put before you this evening. Uh, but with that, staff, and this was reviewed by the Planning Commission as well, uh, they did, uh, were proposing, they did make some changes to that definition of accessory building, and, and that's included in your packet. So, with that, staff and the, and the Planning Commission is recommending approval of the ordinance that's before you. This is a, an ordinance, so if you're comfortable with this language, you could waive second reading. If not, we can bring it back for second reading with any changes that you may have.
Member Swenson.
I think we're committed to passing this and, and seeing what its effect was. So, to start monkeying with it at this date, I'm not really comfortable doing that. Planning Commission spent a long time on it. We spent a considerable amount of time on it. So, I would support going forward, and I would support waiving second reading.
I'll second your motion.
I can't.
All right.
Isn't this a public hearing? I can't really make a motion, right?
It's a little premature.
Yeah, right. No, he said he seconded it, and I wanted to tell him it really wasn't a motion because we have a public hearing.
Maybe we'll second.
Okay.
Curb your enthusiasm, isn't there something to that?
Yeah, no, I wasn't making a motion. I was just saying I would be prepared to at the right time.
All right. Thank you. Um, Member Bennett, then we'll open this up for public hearing.
Director Teague, on page five, the very top line, so it's not part of the material that's recommended for change, um, "Single Dwelling Units Buildings" appears to have an extra S. And I don't know if that's in the original or just in this copy, but that first one should probably be struck. Thanks. And also, question, should that say, given that number two says, "Buildings and Structures Accessory to Single Dwelling Unit Buildings but Not Attached Thereto", should one say, "Single Dwelling Unit Buildings and Structures, and Attached Structures Accessory Thereto", understanding that we are moving most of those, um, items into a category of principal, um, building?
That does make sense.
So, could you repeat it again?
So, could, so one would read what?
Tony? "Single Dwelling Unit Buildings and Attached Structures Accessory Thereto", to distinguish it from two, which says, "Buildings and Structures Accessory to Single Dwelling Unit Buildings but Not Attached Thereto". It's a little bit of Belt and Suspenders.
Okay.
And number one is single dwelling unit build. Okay.
That's a good catch. All right. Um, this is a public hearing. I'm opening it up for public testimony. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward and, uh, inquire or comment regarding these proposed changes in the code? Seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved.
Motion of second to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Pose say nay. Carrie, Member Swenson.
I'll make this motion and waive second reading with the change of the deletion of the S and adding the word "attached" in front of "structures" on number one.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Roll call. Oh, go ahead.
Um, Member Swenson, are you moving the revised, revised, or are you?
I'm moving the revised, revised, which adds your green, your green lettering. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Because I had the support of Director Teague on that.
Roll call, please.
Member Brindle? Aye. Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Havlin?
Aye. Thank you, folks. Some interesting public hearings this evening. We're going to move on to the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council regarding a matter that's not on the agenda this evening?
Uh, do I need to identify myself?
I think you should, for the record.
Frank Lorenz, 7101 York Avenue South. Uh, is the timer working now? Okay, fine. I have some, a couple of concerns about, uh, things that the Met Council and the state legislature seems to be about to do to Edina, and at the end of this, I'm going to ask you to push back on these. I would be happy to be advised that, uh, there have been changes in policy at those two bodies that I'm not aware of. But, uh, in any event, the Met Council was created, uh, back in the 1950s with the objective of stopping the sibling rivalry between Minneapolis and St. Paul, but specifically, uh, to build one sewage treatment plant. And in that endeavor, they were successful. But, uh, shortly thereafter, the fiscal disparities legislation came along to fund those efforts. But since then, the efforts to, uh, dispel the ruinous or expensive competition have been notably failures. But with that in mind, it's my understanding that there is a planner unnamed and unavailable somewhere in Met Council is that decided that in their next year, their next 10-year plan, which is now three years in, by 2035, they want Edina to have a population of 77,000 people. I, I see at least one head shaking. And as we all know, Edina's population at 44,000 has been stable since the very early 1970s. Uh, subject to correction, there aren't too many undeveloped residential lots left in Edina. And, uh, to me, that means dense high-rises unless you start condemning, uh, commercial industrial property west of Highway 100. I can spell Section 8 without using Arabic numerals, if my meaning is clear. The, the nature of Edina is going to change if the Met Council is able to dictate any increase that is remotely like that. That's 23,000 divided by 44,000, and I'll let you do the numbers, but it's more than 50 percent. And the very things that make people want to come and buy a house or have a business in Edina are going to be driven away if that goal happens. The Met Council has a horrible record on the enterprises that they now run, including Metro Transit and the Park System, which used to be called Three Rivers, but Metro Transit, which Bill. It's my understanding that despite the efforts of former, but again, House member Ron Earhart, the possibility of at least studying the so-called Dan Patch commuter rail line is back on the table. Mr. Earhart, when he was in the House before this current session, was able to preclude money to study the Dan Patch Line. The 2013 legislature, although he's now part of it again, opened it up, and so Met Council's lobbying to get that done was successful. And if that light rail commuter line, whatever you want to call it, would actually come to fruition, it would bisect diagonally the western half of Edina to the detriment of everybody that lives there. So Met Council, through the legislature or directly, has some very bad ideas, and they are the 900-pound gorilla in the room. And if you let them prevail in these objectives, there won't be in Edina as we know it in 2035. I could say things about Cabrini-Green and Pruitt-Igoe.
Mr. Lorenz, I got to ask you to wrap up. I let you drift over quite a ways. So thanks for your thoughts. I will tell you that you're raising an issue that many of us have raised with the Met Council. I don't think their, their systems are working well in terms of making their computations. They recognize it themselves. And so there are going to be numbers rerun in terms of projected growth, and I don't think we'll, I think we'll see something more consistent of what we think might happen, which isn't much. And by the time they're done adjusting their software and using these new systems that they have, so, or corrected system, so it'll help. But stay tuned. Thanks for your vigilant eye. All right. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Ben Berg, 4222 Grimes Avenue, South. I emailed the council about a potential change, the seasonal parking ban overnight. And I provided you guys with three reasons. I just thought I'd show up and talk through it really quickly to essentially just start a conversation about this. The first thing, just the general statement that the on-street parking itself is an asset, just having overnight on-street parking allows people to build smaller driveways. They don't have to store cars and things in their driveway. Second is the effects on social gatherings, and third is safety concerns in general. My main concern here is just that the current ordinance essentially incentivizes drunk driving at 1:00 a.m. If people host a party and they have a lot of cars parked on the street, then I, they have, then the visitors have to balance getting their car towed or waiting to sober up or staying over or something to that effect. And I really do legitimately think this is a safety concern. I've sort of seen it happen. So given those sort of ideas, I looked and did a sort of simple, quick study of neighboring communities. I looked at all the first ring suburbs and then our direct neighbors. Six of them have seasonal overnight parking bans, but they all start at 2:00 a.m. So we're the only municipality with a 1:00 a.m. winter ban. So I think even an hour would help us out quite a bit with regard to the safety thing. And then we're also in the minority in having these seasonal bans in general. So I'm sure this is, I don't know if this has ever come up recently. I'm sure I'm overlooking a lot of the larger issues here, but I mean, there are pretty much three ways of going about it. Either you can have the overnight bans, the snowfall trigger ban, or the declared snow emergencies. So pretty much everyone has a snowfall triggered ban. We have the, pretty much the lowest threshold for that at one and a half inches. And then seven of the 20 communities I surveyed have declared snow emergencies, a lot of them with pretty broad language. But sort of regardless, I think it would be sort of beneficial to do away with the overnight ban and put in place sort of a declared snow emergency sort of policy so that, I mean, obviously, if small snowfalls build up, we could declare an overnight emergency and clear the streets, plow all of the streets or plow, you know, most of them. It would also, it would just pretty much allow people to park on all of the nights when it's not snowing, which truly is an asset to the community. I mean, our streets are one of the biggest assets that we have as a city. So I welcome any comments. I'm available by email, benberg00@gmail.com.
Thanks, Mr. Berg, for starting the dialogue. It's an interesting issue. I think we've addressed it on kind of a one-off basis before, although we have generally had a reputation of having the cleanest streets in the metro, and one reason we can do that is because there are no cars on the street. And I think there'd be a lot of people reluctant to give that up. So we'll, but nonetheless, there's some interesting points that you raise, and thank you for taking the time to do all that research.
No problem.
It's interesting.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. We've got some fee issues to deal with tonight. First one is ordinance 2013-11, proposed a mending of Schedule 185A, setting fees for 2014. And Mr. Wallen, Director Wallen, thanks for coming up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight before you, ordinance 2013-11, are those fees which are required to be acted on by ordinance as opposed to the resolution fees that you had adopted earlier in the meeting? The, part of, part of those is the utility fees, which attached to your, to your report was the water sewer, storm sewer utility rate study as prepared by elders and as discussed with council in October at a workshop. Tonight, because part of the, part of the fees that we are requesting to increase are building fees, there is a state statute that requires for all development-related fees, of which this would be one, to hold a public hearing. The public hearing would be held, would be held at the next meeting. So for tonight, the recommendation is first reading only.
Questions for Director Wallen? All right.
If there are no questions, I'll move this.
Yeah, remove the matter on a first reading basis.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve this on a first reading basis. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter in reports and recommendations is Resolution 2013-120, the final plat and preservation easement for the Warner property at 5 Merrill Lane in Rolling Green. Director Teague.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, before you is the final plat. As you recall, back in October, October 1st, the city council approved the preliminary plat for a three-lot subdivision known as the Warner Estates. There were two conditions associated with that preliminary plat that the applicant was asked to satisfy, and they have done so. The first condition was that they needed to make an application for front yard setback variances for the, for the three lots. They did do that, and the variance request went before the planning commission, and the planning commission approved those variances. So 130 feet is the required setback now for, for those three lots. Now, one of the conditions that the planning commission put on that approval was approval of the preservation easement in the landscaping plan, and that's the second part of the, what's before you this evening is approval of that preservation easement. The easement itself has been reviewed by the city attorney, the applicant's attorney, and the attorney for the neighbors, and everybody seems to be in agreement with that, with the language within, within that agreement and the landscape plan that's associated with it. The second piece was verification of the minimum lot size requirements. Staff hired Harriet Johnson surveyors to do that exercise for us, and that study is included in your packet. Member Bennett had a series of questions in regard to the median average in the calculations, and response to her answers were handed out this evening, so you see those. There was an error in the, in the Johnson study where they reversed lot width and lot depth. Staff ran the numbers. It did change the medians slightly, and the, the table is in front of you that's included. The conclusion of all of that is that the, the minimum, or the lot sizes as proposed within this subdivision do meet the medians. And again, that's, that is spelled out within that document that's before you. So we have concluded and we're comfortable with that the proposed three lots all meet our median requirements. So with that, staff's recommending approval of the final plat and the preservation easement as presented this evening.
Member Swenson and Member Sprig.
Who wrote this, preservation easement?
Well, I think there was a lot of hands in it.
Okay. So people other than, than our city attorney and, but you've looked at it. So I have a few questions on it. If we've already passed the front yard setback variance of 130 feet, we did that on November 13th, how many days is it that somebody has to bring a question of variance?
They have 10 days to appeal a variance decision.
So we've gone past the appeal period? No, the variance is passed by the planning commission, so we don't. So the 10-day period has, has gone past for that.
Correct.
On page two, I don't see anything like we had in the preservation easement over on.
Blackfoot.
Blackfoot, thank you. That talks about buckthorn, which is considered a noxious weed. So this basically protects buckthorn, number two, as far as I can see it, unless I'm missing something? Because it protects screening vegetation, which buckthorn is, and I don't want to protect a, I don't think it's appropriate to protect something that we're trying to get rid of in our city. So I need some language in there that allows buckthorn to be removed and killed.
So in B, covenant B, said prohibition shall not apply to any cutting, trimming, or removal reasonably necessary to remove dead, dying, or diseased trees or limbs, comma, or noxious weeds? Or you can call a buckthorn, something along those lines?
It's a way more egregious document or thorough document, or whatever word you want to use than the one we had on Blackfoot. There's a part that I think, I don't think we have any liability, but on page three, when it talks about a dispute and it's the city forest or another city officials are designated, I don't think we're liable, because in M, it talks about a lot of indemnity. But I'd like an answer to that, to confirm that.
They're required to indemnify us.
Okay. So even though we're the ones making decisions on what should or shouldn't happen in 4B, our decisions can't be taken to court?
That's really impossible to say. You can always bring, no matter how baseless the claim may be, you can always file a complaint.
Okay. So there's nothing that can be taken away or added to this that protects the city in this agreement to any more, to any greater extent than there, than is there today?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. I'll stop there and let Member Sprig.
Member Sprig.
I just want to confirm for the, for the record on TV here, that when we're calculating the median lot size, we do not include the subject property. Is that, is that your interpretation?
That has been staff's interpretation in the past. The code isn't completely clear on that, and that was part of the reason we ran the numbers both ways.
It's what we've done for 19 years. I can speak to that at least, having participated in 19 years of planning.
So Roger, are you comfortable with the code language as it is, or is that something we need to amend?
I think it's, I, I concur with the interpretation that staff has been using all these years, but since a question has been raised about it, I think when you, you put on a list of things to clear up, clear up in the future, I don't think it's, you know, a pressing urgent need or anything, but you could make it even clearer by saying, do not include the lot being subdivided. I'm making those calculations.
And what about Member Swenson's recommendation to add "noxious"? Is that, is that, is that a term of art? Is that, is that clear enough?
I don't know if "art" is the right word, but yes. It's a defined term under state law.
So, so in B, covenant B, any removal reasonably necessary to remove dead, dying, could you say, comma, "noxious" or "diseased"?
And then, just to be clear, and say buckthorn, just to be, I know what to add.
You could say "including but not," you could use the word "noxious," and then say "including but not limited to buckthorn."
I'm thinking purple loose trifle grow there, but it could. That would be another one.
So you should, so it's another item, or are you saying remove dead, dying, or diseased trees or limbs, comma, "noxious weeds, including without limitation buckthorn, comma, or trees or limbs," whichever way it's posed?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
In my yard, that's a noxious weed.
Yeah, what about, what about the situation where somebody comes in, buys a, I can't remember the lot numbers.
Will they go 1, 2, 3, so.
Yeah, the next, the lot next to the folks that are living up there.
Three.
Got, forget their name.
Gino.
Gino, Ginal.
Gino.
Gino. The lot, what's the lot number next to Gino's?
Lot 1.
Yeah, so lot 1.
Okay.
So that's the lot we looked at when we were over there, some of us, and looked at the, looked at the easement area. Let's say it's loaded with buckthorn, and now somebody buys lot 1 and, under the protection of the preservation easement, eliminates all the buckthorn, and all the screening's gone. Now what? Do we have to have them replace screening material with their taking out a noxious element like buckthorn? That whole thing could be buckthorn.
I want you to something to help clarify this, and I think take it off the table.
Sure.
The definition.
Come on up and give your name.
Tom Owens.
Tom, good to see you.
Minneapolis real estate lawyer representing Mary Poled and the Ginos. If you look at 2A, and just count down about four, three, four lines, you'll see a parenthetical expression, "which new trees." So the new trees are what are in the landscaping plan attached, together with the existing trees shown in the preservation easement area. And in the plans, the only trees marked are major and mature trees, and they are collectively referred to as the screening vegetation.
Right.
So then, when you go down to 2B, this is about screening vegetation. Buckthorn is low-lying junk.
It's a moot point.
Yep.
Well, as long as we understand that buckthorn is low-lying junk, but I'd still like it to be included, because I don't want there, 10 years from now, to be any question of what is low-lying junk.
But if it's not identified, then it's not part of the preservation easement, and therefore it can be removed.
I think it's a decent, bold suspension approach.
I'm sure the plans are to remove it to improve the site.
Yeah, I think it's clear with.
So we got, the screening vegetation is the trees, and that's what this is all about. about.
Right.
And the principal drafter here, 95%, was Charlie Carpenter, and he was a good guy to work with, and we came up with a pretty good document, I think.
I have a neighbor who has trimmed his buckthorn to look like trees. I would still be comfortable leaving the buckthorn in.
I hate to...
Well, maybe there's a better spot for it.
Hate to include a redundant...
Mayor, if I could suggest, it's really difficult to draft something at the table.
Maybe you could leave it to us to... We understand what you want.
To review what's necessary.
No noxious weeds, no buckthorn.
I'm fine with that.
We'll put it in there.
I'm fine with that.
All right. Member Bennett, or Member Sprague, were you finished?
Yes, sir.
All right. Member Bennett?
Thank you. Two points raised earlier regarding the median. Understanding Member Swenson's statement that as a member of the planning commission and then a member of this body, that this is the practice that's been followed for 19 years, and then Member Sprague's question and point, I was satisfied that when staff looked at this, inclusion or exclusion made no difference.
Right.
In other words, it still satisfied the median. That was one of my big concerns, is that there would be a difference one way or the other. And so whatever we do with it in future, this evening's consideration is not influenced by it because it doesn't change it. However, Director Teague, you did say that there was an error. Were the numbers then in the resolution, are those numbers accurate? And does any of them need to be adjusted to reflect the new number obtained when the numbers were unreversed, the lot width and lot depth?
Go on, Johnson.
On 1.04.
Run 1.04, correct.
It would, and we can make those corrections.
Okay. And finally, to Member Swenson's concerns, I think we have city crews and neighborhood associations pulling buckthorn, so I think it's a good idea to have it excluded.
We're going to wait for you to give us those new numbers. I had a question on page two of the resolution under item 3. Says preservation easement, preservation, it should be singular, preservation easements established along the east lot line, subject to approval of the city council. The question I had for you, Director Teague, was... The under 2, we're listing a series of conditions which are precedent to issuance of a building permit. And is it the intention that the preservation easement be approved along the east lot lines as part of 2? Or is it supposed to be a standalone provision? And if it's a standalone provision, how does it relate to the now-therefore language?
That is a standalone provision, and so you're satisfying that condition this evening. Once we've agreed on that language, we would have it signed and filed.
It seems to me that it should say, the city council, the city of Edana approves the final plat for the proposed subdivision of 5 Merrill Lane, subject to the following. And then there are the things that they have to do under 1, 2, and 3. Oh, okay, I got down below the line here. It kind of ran down into my other, into the lower part where the... I didn't see it down in there. You've already got that in there, but it's below the line in my copy, and it's kind of blended in with the city of Edana address.
It does.
Approval is subject to the following conditions. All right. That's fine. I just didn't see it because of the blending in there. All right, so we've got that singular typographical correction on 3 then. And then, have you got those calculations?
I would use, instead of the lot width 192, it would be 195, and the lot depth would be 279 instead of 277.
And the median lot area?
That would stay the same.
Stay the same?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead, Member Bennett.
Mayor, with respect to your comment on the singular east lot lines or line, I think if you look at the depiction of the three, it's exhibit B.
Yep.
All of those lines are on the east, and that's why I think they use the plural.
I was looking at the word preservation at the beginning.
Okay. I missed that one.
Yeah, not the...
Yep.
The rest of it was okay to me. I understood what they were doing. And as you say, everything, when you look back at the proposed preservation easement schematics, they're all on the east side, so that was okay. It was just that I thought preservation ought to be singular and not plural at the beginning of the sentence. Okay. All right, we've got those changes to the resolution. Did we have a motion? I can't recall. No, I don't think so. Do we have a motion on this matter?
I'll move it with the changes that have been made on the diocese to the 1.04, and with the exclusion of buckthorn language to be added by staff to the preservation easement.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion. Why don't we handle that in as soon as we get past the motion?
Okay, it's for this motion.
Okay, I know, but it's related to it, but I think Attorney Knutson can explain after the fact why this isn't relevant.
Okay.
This is the email from the person that was saying we applied the wrong standard, but let's get through this motion.
Just to be clear, does your approval include approval of the preservation easement?
Yes.
Right, it's attached to the resolution. The secondary understood that as well?
Yep.
All right.
I'm there.
Okay, so then we got that typographical correction on paragraph 3 under the word preservation. So, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Now, we had a email on the diocese from a resident of Rolling Green, resides, I think, across the street from the subject property at 5 Merrill Lane. He's at 4704 Merrill Lane Avenue. Raised certain issues with regard to the variance request and the plat approval. And Attorney Knutson, you've looked at this email, and would you give us your comments, please, with respect to the issues that he has raised? It's actually relative to the comment you made earlier, because he's saying we applied the wrong standard in relying on section 850 instead of section 810.05 of the code, back to the two ways you can have a variance issue. So would you comment on this email, please?
Certainly, Mayor. There are two types of variances. There's variances from the subdivision requirements, and there are variances from the zoning requirements. Setbacks, placement of houses, where they have to be on a lot, are all zoning requirements. So if you want to deviate from that, you need a zoning variance. A subdivision variance could be something as... You see very few subdivision variances, but if you require a 50-foot wide street, and someone wants to put in a 30-foot wide street, and your subdivision ordinance has a standard for street widths, then you would need a subdivision variance. But here, this is clearly variance from the zoning ordinance.
Member Bennett?
If I understand the correspondence correctly, the question is more to the nature of the discretion, since there was no variance in this instance sought for the subdivision. There was a variance sought for placement of eventual, of building, and then the preservation easements related to that. But it's more with respect to the discretion or lack of discretion that the council has in making the decision to subdivide, relating to our previous decision regarding the Indian Hills property as well. And could you please reiterate, because I know that you've commented on this before?
Some of you have seen it. I have a discretionary pyramid, which I should bring back sometime. My judgment, you have more discretion in approving or disproving a variance than you do a subdivision, because a variance allows a deviation from your requirements of your city code. And the discretion you have is applying the criteria for the variance, and the criteria for subdivision variances and zoning variances differ. They're different criteria. And your discretion is determining whether the criteria for the variance have been met. And if there's a factual basis for your conclusion that it has been met or has not been met, it will generally be withheld, upheld, excuse me.
And when subdivision is sought, and there's no need for a variance because the requested subdivision meets the criteria that are stated objectively, then the discretion is more limited?
Yes.
And we have a code that expresses some considerations, but considerations not stated in objective terms are regulate decision-making, how?
The courts have said they would like objective standards to apply, and whatever objective means, in reviewing, approving, or denying a subdivision. A reasonable person should be able to read what the rules are, apply them, and determine whether they meet the requirements. The courts don't like fuzzy standards, what they say aren't standards at all.
Thank you.
This was the advice you gave us on this particular lot subdivision.
Yes.
Request, as well as one on Blackfoot Pass, is that we had to have objective standards in lot width, lot median area, and lot length, I think, or lot depth, I should say, are objective standards.
Absolutely.
All right.
Give me measure.
It also led to our discussion about segregating the, or bifurcating the ordinance, so you have one set of objective criteria for code-compliant subdivisions and another for non-code compliant.
You can have, I'm not sure what that means, you can have variance standards...
And then...
Which differ from the subdivision ordinance, from the zoning ordinance, because that's what state law allows. They used to be the same until the statute got changed for zoning, but not for subdivision variances.
I believe we also discussed the possibility, well, certainly looking at the code, but also taking a careful look and deciding what it is that we want to have quantified in objective terms.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, anything else to add? All right, you'll work on this preservation easement language with our city attorney, I take it?
I'll swerve it up and record it as the kind of plaque if recorded, and I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we've got resolution 2013-119, accepting various donations. We have a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second, approving these, or accepting these donations on behalf of the city of Edana, by the city council. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. This period, we have a couple of donations to the Edana Art Center, and then we have a significant donation from the Edana Community Foundation with their grant and aid program to the park and rec department, and $6,000. So thanks to the foundation and all those contributors to the foundation that make a grant and aid of this significance possible. So...
Pardon me.
Yes, Member...
Do we have any information about what programs are benefiting from that $6,000?
Yeah.
The grant and aid program is something that provides scholarships, basically, for families, so their kids can, or they can participate in programs.
Correct.
And I'm just curious if this is athletic participation or what it is. And that may be something we can get offline.
Yeah, can I, I'd be happy to get that for you.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, it would be fun to know, because that's significant.
I was looking at that, too, and looking at the language, it just said grant and aid program. It would be nice to know.
For instance, if it's the Van Vulcanberg...
What it's for.
Fund for kids, that's really what those donations are pointed toward, is toward scholarships to park programs.
Now, we've got to look at a date for the annual dinner meeting with boards and commissions, where we recognize the departing board and commission members and greet the new ones that are coming into service to the city. There are three dates, suggested dates, for this event, and I don't know how other people's calendars look, but the only date amongst those three that works for me is March 17th, Monday, March 17th.
Well, I can make it work. I would like the Wednesday, because I teach on Monday evenings, but I can make the 17th work, if it works for everybody else.
What time do you start teaching?
I teach from 3:00 to 8:00.
Oh.
It's a national holiday, St. Patrick's Day.
Or we can look for an alternative date, but the 19th, I can't...
Manager Neil, when is NLC in Washington?
March 8th is the talk.
Okay. Thank you.
Works for me.
So 17th?
17th work for you, Member Swenson?
Yep.
All right. Member Bennett?
Yes.
All right, should we go with Monday, March 17th?
We should go with Monday, March 17th.
Do you need that by motion? I don't think we do, do we? No, that's fine. And then the next matter was the annual volunteer recognition reception event, and we've got a couple of dates there, Monday, April 28th, or Tuesday, April 29th. How do folks' schedules look for those two dates? Any preference?
Well, I would have the same preference.
Tuesday?
Tuesday would be my preference.
All right.
Unless everybody else needs it to be a Monday.
Tuesday would work for me. It's clear.
It's blank on the couch.
Oh, for the knock, she's thinking of the... Yeah, well, they... In the afternoon. Generally, something. Oh, that's right.
It's 5 to 7. 29th.
Member Swenson and Members Sprague, your calendars?
I'm good, on the Tuesday. That's what works for me.
Okay. I'm fine.
Okay. Member Swenson's good. Member Bennett's good. I'm good. April 29th, it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for your accommodation on the 17th. Correspondence petitions. Anything else, other than what was on the diocese this evening? All right.
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. I could say I did attend the Veterans Memorial Committee meeting that they recently held. I noticed this was minutes for September 20th, and they're a very diligent group and continue to look for ways to fund the memorial, and I think they're on a good track. to look for ways to fund the memorial, and I think they're on a good track. Aviation noise update, Member Bennett.
Thank you. Director Bennerott's going to bring up the PowerPoint that Chris Ocker. Chris Ocker, who is liaison on aviation noise, prepared this PowerPoint from materials that I have collected, and that she has collected, and so we're putting information in front of people in a written form. This is the contact information for the MAC general offices on the left, it looks like a mock-up of the webpage. Again, macnoise.com is where people go to find out information about noise programs, flight tracking, how to file a noise complaint, they can do it online, that it offers a menu of choices, and if people want to make that complaint in a more specific way, a more personal way, the number is below 612-726-9411. Then contact information here for our representative at the Metropolitan Airports Commission, Lisa Palin, who represents District C, it includes Edina, Golden Valley, St. Louis Park, Richfield, and part of Minneapolis. This is her telephone number and her email address, and she has asked that concerned Edina residents contact her. And any information that people wish to share with her is appropriate, again, how it affects their lives, what their concerns are, and also what their hopes are or desires for airport operation going forward. Then elected officials, and we understand that the FAA is guided and funded by Congress, and the MAC is guided and funded by the state legislature, so these are the contact points for both our representatives in Congress and our representatives in, at the state. And Governor Mark Dayton's office telephone number is at the bottom, Governor Dayton appoints all of the members of the Metropolitan Airport Commission. Here is the work plan for 2014, there was a change made to this at the most recent meeting. And at the request of Minneapolis, A, that an actual noise contour report and consent decree amendment mitigation eligibility, that that will be completed by an independent consultant. G, that there be a national next-gen overview and implementation update. In other words, what has been done at other airports in the country, where has it been implemented? It's been tough to get a straight answer on that one, and also, how has it been implemented? Fully, partially, number of tracks, multiple tracks, are the tracks rotated? And again, the word national added at the last meeting. And then K, the validation study, that will include the participation of NOC city representatives in a measurement and analysis process, and that is for measurement of existing conditions. And then there are other studies that you can see on the list that include different approaches. The E, the status of Center of Excellence Partner TRB and FICAN initiatives, those are studies that address everything, including the cardiac correlations that were in the news recently, also environmental effects from noisy, from emissions, fuel emissions, and there were actually, oh, I don't know, about 15 pages of reports on those studies, summaries, some of them have been completed, and links to them in the most recent NOC agenda. So somebody looking to see what studies are underway, have been completed, and where to find more information about them, should look at the meeting materials from the November 20th meeting on the Noise Oversight Committee website. And those are the changes that were made to the work plan, so that will go, that did go yesterday to the MAC for its approval, and I will look forward to hearing at the next meeting whether or not it was approved, anticipate that it was. Then the 2013 NOC accomplishments, top on the list is amending the bylaws to include the City of Edina as an at-large community member. Bullet point number six, annual runway use analysis, finding that north flow operations made up 63% of total operations. That's a number significant to our community, because that's the direction that we're in, we're part of those north flow operations. And four bullet points below that, conducted a runway 30L and 30R northbound departure study that verified FAA implementation of three divergent headings, 320, 340, and 360 degrees for northbound departures. There was also involved in that study, an indication that verified people's perceptions that yes, flights were lower overhead. It was attributed to summer and the heat and humidity making, causing those planes to fly lower. There's also some relationship with the use of regional jets, and the fact that they are making up about 50% of the current fleet mix. And then we can also see from information that was provided in the agenda for the November 20th meeting, that actually the number of flights have picked up, over 2011 and 2012 numbers. And then the final slide is the meeting schedule and topics for the, for 2014. Again, this does not include the public input meetings, which are quarterly, I'll make sure that people have news about those. They are including guest speakers for most of the months, in order to address topics of concern, both on the NOC and among the public. FAA is invited to speak in January, but if they're not ready, they would appreciate a swap with information that would be more relevant to the City of Eagan. Jeff Hamel will be the guest speaker for the March meeting. The May meetings and July meetings are being reversed with Delta Airlines being invited to speak in May, and then a validation study being changed instead to the July 16th meeting. Again, it appears that Delta is speaking again in September, and then the Metropolitan Airports Commission Vice President will be speaking on their capital improvement program in November, he was unable to speak at the November 20th meeting. So hopefully this will give people advance news of when meetings are, and also contact information. And as always, we urge people with concerns to contact not only the MAC and NOC, but also to contact their state and federal representatives. Thank you very much. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you, Member Bennett. Council comments, Member Sprague.
Thank you. Couple agenda items from the last meeting that I was absent for, I wanted to comment on, one was on the topic of Edinburgh that we discussed tonight, about controlling costs and creating more revenue there. This was the Edinburgh Park LED lighting retrofit, and I remember meeting with Director Katry when she was running Edinburgh about those ballasts. And finally, it looks like we've accomplished a retrofit, the 18-month payback is incredible, and that's going to give some added financial stability to that budget for years to come, so I'm glad to see that happen. Hopefully, there may be some options for Braemar Arena as well, I saw that in discussion at the Park Board and the budget review, so I'll look forward to hearing about that. And also, missed a vote on Promenade Phase 4, but looking at the design, I was, I thought it was a really unique nuanced water feature design, I was really happy to see that that passed, with the babbling brook on either side of that larger water body and the waterfall, it's just, it's going to be a really beautiful aesthetically pleasing element, and will also have some functionality for filtration, so glad to see that passed. I picked up the Relocation Guide 2014, Twin Cities Living, talks about 10 great neighborhoods, 10 great cities, and conspicuously absent from that is Edina, again, we're not listed, and I think we have a public relations issue.
No, we just didn't buy.
We get a population issue, we don't meet the 50,000-person threshold.
Is that what it is?
I think so.
So, but I think, I remember talking about this when I got elected, about we should not rest on our laurels, and we should be talking about our city and promoting it, not only for jobs and business relocating, businesses locating here, so attracting and retaining jobs, but also for attracting commerce. And I don't, we don't have a Visitors Bureau, but I know it's been coming up in conversations lately, at least with Chamber of Commerce, and I hope we.
The Chamber it has.
We get a chance to talk more about that, and some tools we could use to help fund that. Moving on to the, the proposed budget and the goals, the division goals, on page 75, it talks about communications and technology goals. And there are two things I'd like to add to that, and I've mentioned this to Manager Neil and to the rest of the council before. One is, I think we need to develop a strategic communication plan that mirrors the council work plan, and that is a campaign focused on some of those, the goals that we're working on. And the second thing is, in terms of outputs, is I believe we should be doing some type of insert in the Sun Current. I know that CHASCIA moved to doing an insert years ago, Eden Prairie did one, because they wanted to get the word out about their city initiatives, in their own words, on a more consistent basis. And with our about-town being highly read, not as highly read as the Sun Current, but a highly valuable source of information for residents, but only coming out quarterly, I think it would be valuable for us to do a monthly insert in the Sun. So I don't know if, Manager Neil, if you want to talk about that, the proposal, and how we could potentially add this into our budget discussions.
I don't have the, I don't have a copy of the actual proposal, because I gave it to you, but we are, Director Bennerott and I have looked at this proposal, have applied some cost estimate to it, and believe that we can add it to our budget proposal between now and the final, final budget. And we can discuss a little bit more about what that tool can do for us at that time.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
I have nothing directly to report, I've just continued to meet with resident groups that want to talk, and I've listened, so it's been a busy week for that and weekend.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. Founder's Day is coming up next Thursday, and we have now founders descendants coming from Seattle, Washington, and Livermore, California. One descendant called me today, and she'll be coming with her daughter and two grandchildren. So we have about, between 40 and 50 so far, with about five more RSVP-ing today, and I'm just delighted that they're coming, coming home for this. We will have a day of activities for the founders descendants, with the public activities beginning at 5:00 at the Cahill School on the Grange. There will be costumed interpretive guides from the Oliver Kelly Farm to talk about the Grange. At 6:00, we hope people will move to City Hall, and there will be a display in the lobby by the Human Rights and Relations Commission on human rights milestones at Edina. The Edina Corel will give a mini-concert in the council chambers beginning at 6:30, and the program will begin promptly at 7:00. We have greetings from our congressional delegation and some guest officials who will be with us that evening, and we promise to then move through the history of the city, all 125 years in 45 minutes or less, with some humor and some information, and then a reception to follow at 8:00 in the lobby with cake. So hope to see everyone there, and I've really enjoyed having the chance to meet the people that I've met working on this.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
I have a couple things, a follow-on from something Member Sprague talked about, and that was, the Visitors Bureau, in talking with Lori Severson, who is president of the Edina Chamber of Commerce, they get eight to 10 calls, I think, a day, about where can I stay when I'm there, I'm coming there, where, hotels, restaurants, what can I do, what do you have for kids, that kind of thing. So clearly, people are interested in coming here and wanting to know what they can do while they are here, and the chamber seems to be where they're calling for that information. So there's interest in a Visitors Bureau, that would be an interesting thing to look at. The only other thing I have is, I was at Grandview Tyrenado recently, and Rick Murphy was looking at a screen with all these numbers on it, which was a readout of the, of what the solar panels are doing. And I said, hey, you know, that would be an interesting thing to take a look at now that we've got that as one of our PACE projects, to look at how effective it is, month-to-date energy, let's see here, on an annual basis, it's 27, over 27,000 kilowatts that it generates. On a daily basis, it's 75 kilowatts. And since it has been installed, lifetime production of CO2-free energy is equivalent to planting 830 trees and taking 192 cars off the road. So it's having an effect. They've got, this is just one of the energy sustainability measures that they have at that facility, so it's kind of fun to see that. And, and he gets this report every, anytime he wants it, but pretty much he's keeping track of it on a, on a monthly basis, and he's really into it, so it's pretty, pretty fun to have that. Other than that, I too have been visiting with residents, as everybody has, about sidewalks and about construction project ideas, and continue to do that. We have an engaged community, so that's, that's a nice thing. Thanks.
Thanks. See, on the 20th of November, I attended the reception honoring St. Paul Mayor Chris Coleman, who is now the new chair or president, I'm not sure of the exact title, of the National League of Cities, which is quite an honor. Karen Anderson, former mayor of Minnetonka, was the last chair that I recall for president. He'll do, he'll do an excellent job. And then we had a community works meeting on the 21st, both Member Brindle and I were there, we had some folks here this evening talking about the housing element of the community works related to Southwest LRT, and I hope that was interesting for people as well. On the 21st, I also attended an evening meeting of the US 169 Corridor Coalition Board, as they continue their work on trying to get projects built from our community, basically south to Mankato. And then, as I mentioned earlier, on the morning of the 22nd, I attended the Veterans Memorial Committee meeting chaired by Richard Olson, and they're making some good progress, they've got some great volunteers, and it may take a little bit of time, but I think we'll get there on getting that Veterans Memorial built. And I'm also working on a, what they call a TPP, Policemaker Task Force, that's a transportation policy plan over at the Met Council, long-range vision for transportation. We had one of our periodic meetings on the 25th, and then on the 26th, some of you may have been there as well, I was there fairly early, the Waffle Breakfast Retirement Party for Susan Howell, and I think 29 years she was with the city, did a fabulous job, we'll miss that gentle nature of hers and that constant smile and willingness to help everybody and just a good, a good-to-the-core person, I would say. So we'll miss her around here, and Manager Neil and others are going to have to look for a replacement, and we wish her the best in retirement. And then, on the 30th, we had the tree lighting ceremony down at 50th and France, 5:00 on last Saturday night, gathered all the kids. Member Swenson was there last year covering for me, because I couldn't be there, but.
Yeah, but I had an eight-week-old puppy, did you have an eight-week-old puppy?
I didn't have that for, no, effect. So we had all the kids gather up and did the countdown from 10 to zero, and the tree lit up, it was a lot of fun. I'll let Manager Neil talk about this, but tomorrow night, we're attending the Great Places Initiatives Award, we're getting an award, or.
Maybe.
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
You've been asked to attend, it's always a good sign.
And then we've got a Southwest Corridor, Southwest LRT Corridor Management Committee meeting tomorrow morning, so it'll be interesting to get an update on those experts that are working on relocation of freight, and also looking at the potential environmental impact of two shallow tunnels down on the Kennelworth Corridor. If. down on the Kennelworth Corridor if freight and passenger rail get co-located down there. The biggest news I have for everybody is that this is, this is a distinct piece of praise for Deb Mangan. And I was at a, at an event where Mark Ritchie was the Speaker. And he called Deb Mangan the best election clerk in the United States.
That's a good guy.
And praise, praise does not come lightly from him. It's, it's a task that is very, very difficult, but to have your clerk called by your Secretary of State, the best election clerk in the nation, is quite a, quite a compliment. I wanted to pass that on to you.
A perfect moment for you, wasn't it?
It was. That felt, I felt good. I wasn't even, I wasn't even you, and I felt great. So that's it for me. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item on my list is an item that is responsive, I think, to a request that we discussed at our last meeting. And the question was, how do we regulate e-cigarettes? And after, after some discussions with, with our city clerk and with our city attorney, there are elements of the e-cigarette usage that we can regulate and some that we can't. And the ones that we can regulate is where these activities are taking place specifically in places that are specifically designed for, for the activity. So I did ask the city attorney to draft this interim ordinance. I'd like you to take a look at it, and we can put it on the agenda for next time. But I think your sense of this as in a community issue was, was right on the mark because as city clerk and I were talking about it, we're getting, we, we get a number of requests. We get requests every week, actually, about do we license, do we not license, how do we handle it? So this is a way that we can address the smoking lounge, vapor lounge, kind of a, kind of an activity. We can't apparently address whether people can use them inside the city or not, but we can do this as a land use. So take a look at this and, and.
Can we have it on the agenda?
We will have it on the agenda next, next Tuesday night.
That'd be great.
Not next Tuesday night, two, two weeks.
Two weeks, the 17th. I really appreciate this work. I know we got, I always got an email. Probably got copies of someone that heard we were talking about this already and was very excited that we were looking at how we can regulate it.
E-cigarette use is already up in high school, high schoolers. So, I mean, smoking's out, e-cigarettes are in. So how we, how we mirror that behavior in our public spaces is important.
And, and we have also, we did pass along the, the news to the Community Health Committee that we want them to take this up and to have a discussion about it. So they know that.
Is there any research, any substantive research yet indicating whether this is indeed a health hazard?
I've, I've got a pile, Mayor. I've got a 200-page report. I haven't read it, but I've scanned through it. It's being looked at.
All right.
So you understand that there's no smoke involved.
Anecdotally, what I, what I hear is that it leads to cross-using. So they end up using cigarettes and e-cigarettes down the road.
So you, you don't have the secondary smoke issue, obviously.
That's correct. There's no smoke. They're inhaling liquid nicotine.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you. We look forward to having a fuller discussion on the 17th.
So as part of that research, I think we should be looking at the issue of whether or not we could ban the use of e-cigarettes in public buildings.
In parks.
And, and public facilities.
Well, and they are inhaling liquid nicotine, as are the people around them. So there's still a secondhand, there's still, yeah, there's still a secondhand.
There's a vapor.
Yes.
So could you look at that as well?
We will.
I mean, and, Manager Neil?
Yep.
If we could ban them, ban the use of them in public facilities.
We have.
And public parks, we would like to do that, I think.
As a, as a management, I don't know, as a management decision, we, we have made that decision with our employees that that's how we're going to handle it because we have faced it already.
You certainly have the authority, without any question, to ban its use in any facility you own.
Public parks?
Any facility you own.
Okay. That's a facility.
Or property.
Property, excuse me.
Let's look at that issue.
I think a facility is a building, so I, it probably has a broader, it probably is a broader definition.
I suspect that wasn't the only thing you wanted to talk about this evening.
No, I'll run through just some very quickly. Yesterday at 10:16 a.m., the cutover from Richfield's 911 Center to our 9111 Center occurred. So right now, this evening, our dispatching staff are handling the public safety dispatching for Golden Valley, Richfield, and Edina simultaneously. They're doing good work there. We have given invitations to our state legislative delegation to join the council for a joint meeting on Tuesday, January 7th, the work session that night. We'll see how many we can get. The, we mentioned it already, I mentioned it once earlier tonight, but National League of Cities Congressional Conference is March 8th through the 12th. There is a deadline on December 31st to register, to receive sort of the early registration deadline, excuse me, discount. In addition to that, they are offering a six-for-five deal. So if we have five paid, five paid registrants, we can get a six for free. So if you are interested in attending that conference in March in DC, please let me know, and we'll begin the process of getting, getting our, our accommodations made, our travel arrangements made, and most importantly, meetings set up with electeds and appointed folks.
We could bunk up.
And I couldn't help, I couldn't end my comments tonight without pointing to the 20 pounds of green book and paper in front of you. That is the new city code.
I think it's a weapon that you can use in your house should you have a break-in.
Well, it has already, it has already harmed our city clerk.
Yeah, it already drew, it already drew blood from our.
With great irony, the code has already hurt her. But this is, this is after many hours and much effort on the behalf of Clerk Mangan.
It is a beautiful volume, and I'll treasure it always.
All right, thank you. So that's all I've got. Thanks.
Can I ask the words?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. I sent out an. I sent out an email about interview dates in February, and I got an answer from.
Me.
Ann and Josh, but I don't think I had answers from the rest of you. So are, are, are those dates, they're in, the dates are.
I can give my answer now, if you'd like to just give me.
They are February 6th, February 10th, and February 19th. And I, I had the days of the weeks mixed up, but I think I have it straight now. It's Thursday, the 6th.
Okay.
Monday, the 10th, and Wednesday, the 19th. So that hits three different days of the week and three different weeks of the month.
My response to Deb was I can be there the 6th, the 10th, and the first half of the 19th.
I can be there on all three evenings.
Looks like how I could be there all three.
We will then be doing a press release in mid-December and, and starting to solicit applications.
Okay.
Probably through mid-January.
Great.
So are you going to send us a list of the vacancies?
I will be sending you a list of vacancies. Thank you.
Mine's holding down my coat, so I can't leave without.
All right. Anything else for the council? We're going to adjourn and go right back into session with the HRA. Council meeting is adjourned. Calling the Order of the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Brindle.
Here.
Commissioner Sprague.
Here.
Commissioner Swenson.
Here.
Our chair have one.
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion and second to approve the meeting agenda, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay, carried. We've got minutes of the HRA meeting, November 19, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve those minutes, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay, carried. And we have a companion resolution to one that was on the consent agenda regarding requesting a public hearing for Pentagon Park Tiff District. Resolution 2013-16. Manager Nuenendorf, you want to address this issue?
Yes, happy to. As you mentioned, this is a companion piece to a resolution passed earlier in the evening, one of the first items. This piece addresses the Pentagon Park Office Project, the Office Park. It's a 15-building office park that was built in the late 1960s and functioned extremely well for many decades. However, since 2004, the assessed value of that property has declined by more than 60 percent. And the vacancy rate of some of the buildings far exceeds the, what you'd find in the typical marketplace, which is usually quite successful in this area. Nearly every one of the buildings requires significant repair after several years of deferred maintenance. In fact, the vast majority of this area is in need of redevelopment so that this downward trend can be reversed. So the resolution tonight requests that the HRA requests that the city council schedule a public hearing to be held in February of 2014 so that we can formally consider creation of a tax increment financing district to help spark revitalization of this area.
Questions for Manager Nuenendorf?
Do we want to, do we want to set a specific public hearing date rather than just specifying a month?
The resolution does identify February 28th, which is the regular scheduled meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Mayor, I'll move this matter. All right. Got a motion, we have a second.
All second.
Got a motion and a second on Resolution 2013-16 for the HRA discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay, carried. That completes the work of the HRA.
February 28th is not a council meeting, no.
Eighteenth. February eighteenth. Did I say February 18th? Yeah. My apologies, February 18th, not the 28th.
Okay, thank you.
That's on the resolution.
It's not in this resolution, it's on the city council.
Right.
Resolution. All right. Anything else for the HRA? Stand adjourned.
Deb, can we read the case?
He did. You were it.